Good evening. Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
So tonight is our budget meeting. We will walk through our entire budget. We have all our staff representatives here for all our different schools. They'll walk through everything for us tonight. We'll go through three nights if it's needed, but tradition holds. We usually get it done in the first night, but we'll see. And if we're getting close, we will extend tonight so that we make tradition stand. Now, also, we meet now with the Finance Committee with their Subcommittee on Education, and Mr. Harry Helm is the Chair. And if you would like to introduce your members for us tonight?
Well, I think that I'll let each of them introduce themselves so they can let you know a little bit of their background, you know, what they do in the community. I've been on the Finance Committee for nearly three years now. I've been a resident of Plymouth since 1995. So, and now I'm the Chair of our Budget Subcommittee for the School District.
My name is Betty Cavaco. I've been on the Finance Committee for a little bit more than a year. I am the President of a nonprofit, Friends of Manomet Youth Center, and I'm glad to be here.
Good evening. My name is Chris Merrill. I've been on the Finance Committee for 13 years now. So I've been, grew up here in Plymouth for my, most of my life. Attended school down in North Carolina and then moved up this way, settled down, had a family, and the rest is history.
Good evening. My name's Scott Stevenson. I've been in the Finance Committee for about a year. I've lived in Plymouth for approximately 12 years, and I have a son in the public school systems in Plymouth.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, all of you. As we proceed through the night, if you have questions or anything, I just would ask you to direct them through the Chair, and we'll handle them that way. There is a lot of material that'll be covered at a pretty fast clip. So we break with our normal tradition where we would wait to the end of the presentation. If you have a pressing question that you want to get in, just give me the high sign and I'll recognize you, okay? And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Mestes. He's going to give us the summary and set up the night.
We have a warrant to approve before that. I would like to get started.
See that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm rolling now, so. All right. Comments from the general public? Do we have anybody here from the general public that would like to address the school committee? Okay, seeing none. And then we have our bills that we need to pay before we get rolling. So Ms. Badger?
Where school committee members have invited with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Reports and Accounts Payable Warrant S-120816 dated December 8th, 2016 in an amount of $531,648.13 as presented.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Electronic voting, please. Help if I join the meeting then. So for the folks from the Finance Committee, we use electronic school board. So when we're taking votes, you'll see in a moment it'll post. Sometimes our server is a little slow, so you'll see us waiting awkwardly, you know, awkward pause every so often, and that's just to get the votes up there. And now, with that housekeeping taken care of, Dr. Mestes.
I might go ahead and stand. I feel more comfortable standing than sitting. So tonight I want to welcome everyone to our budget presentation. This budget represents all our schools in the district and the overview of the district as a whole. So tonight's presentation, we will give a budget overview on the key points to the budget, some of the highs and lows. After that, we will have our Cost Center Managers, starting with the elementary principals, review certain pieces of their budget, give you some information about their schools. Then we'll move to the middle school, high school, and so on. So by the end of the night, you will hear from every Cost Center Manager who has the responsibilities of managing their school or their program. So you'll have an opportunity to hear from them tonight. So our budget process really starts with the methodology, and that methodology is really centered around a meeting that we have in September, and that is with the Town Manager, Selectment Chair, Advisor and Finance Chair, School Committee Chair, to review the budget process for the upcoming budget season. That meeting is in September, and we start really setting the course for building the budget. I meet with the Department Heads in Plymouth, with Melissa Regge, and every Department Head that really reports the Town Hall, I meet with them. Melissa sets the tone. She sets what we believe is the direction for setting the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I then meet with the Principals, the Coordinators, the Directors that are our Cost Center Managers, and you will hear them tonight. They have all had the responsibility to take a look at their budgets, to really make sense of them, to take a look at enrollment, take a look at supplies, materials. Staffing adjustments are all managed at a central office level. So they basically, all their staff, any increments to staffing, those adjustments are made at the central office level. And then we came up with the budget message, which parallels what you'll hear throughout the town moving forward as we look at the 17, 18 budget. The message this year was to develop a same-level service budget, and we were very strict to build a budget that has no additions in staff or facility or materials other than the supplies that are relative to same-level of service. There will be some adjustments that you will see that have been made, but they are most likely tied to a line item transfer to more appropriately placed budget dollars in one cost center into another. But tonight, any adjustments that we have in the budget, you will actually hear from the Cost Center Managers, Mr. Costin himself, on how some of those transitions really play out in the budget process. In addition, we have developed over the last several years a per pupil allocation for supplies and materials at the, at all levels in the district. So every child in the district is allocated a certain dollar amount, and we work on those dollar amounts based on population by building, and that is built into each budget. Those are many times managed through the coordinators in our district, and every coordinator in our district really supports our building principles to make sure that those allocations are allotted for and also expended when the time comes. So let's get into the budget. The biggest, one of the biggest escalators that you'll see in the budget is our contracted service line item. And contracted services is basically everything that we have in our district that has a contract associated with it. Mr. Costin and his office really manages every contract that we have. There are statutes that bind us and we bargain, but every contract that we have in the district, this is how it breaks out with increases for contracted services. These are some of the drivers in an educational budget, and they are quite troubling at times, and these are the hardest things for us to manage. If you take a look at the largest increase that you'll see is a $362,000 increase. This current year is the last year of our bus contract. Mr. Costin just went out and worked with a bid process to actually recruit and have bus companies submit a bid for transportation. We actually went through the process and a contract was awarded. And if you take a look at the increase, the increase for next year is $362,000 above the current price for transportation. As we go through the budget, you will take a look at what the whole piece is for transportation. The next item is special education tuitions. Special education tuitions are up at about $190,000. One of the things that we struggle with in our district, quite frequently with, is the escalation that out-of-district sped tuitions really cost. I have received memos at times from out-of-district placements that tuitions have gone up double digits, $20,000, $30,000, and at times it makes it really difficult for us to make sense of it all. But if you take a look at the tuitions relative to next year, they're up about $190,000. Special education transportation is up $69,000. We have two, actually three different forms of transportation in our district. We have our buses that transport all students in the district. We have our second level of transportation, which is special education transportation. Those are the vans that transport within the district students that are in special education programs around the district and in some cases outside the district. And our third level of transportation is we actually manage some of our own buses, and those are used for athletic competitions and field trips. And we do have a number of buses that we do run in the district, and you will see that as we go through the budget. Student support is up about $41,000. Student support is Dr. Halpin's cost center, and you will hear tonight some of the challenges that we have within student support services. His office really manages our homeless situations and McKenna Evento, which is attached to that, and he can really kind of walk through some of the pieces that is really contributing to this $41,000 increase. Another issue that we're going to see tonight is software licenses. We have a significant network in our district. We have a large number of devices that are attached to the network. Our system engineer, Alan McLean, tonight will walk through a little bit about the software. The $40,000 price tag increase you see there is for licenses for virus protection in our district, which the license is up, and he has some information on that. Buildings and grounds is up $38,000, and those are contracts that are associated with that. Miscellaneous is up $31,000, and we can really get into that when we get to that particular sections of the budget. Vocational tuitions is up $15,000. For everyone that understands vocational education in the room, you're very familiar with the opportunity that students have that choose to go to a vocational program that we do not offer in our district. For example, if your child would like to go to a program that offers horticulture or animal husbandry and we don't offer it, the students can apply to those districts that we support, that we endorse, and those students can actually apply and become accepted to those programs. Unfortunately, these vocational programs charge tuition that is much higher than our vocational program. It's about $18,000 per student. The Plymouth Public Schools has to pay the tuition for those students. Right now, we have about six students that are attending. We're anticipating another student for next year, but that number fluctuates. So when the enrollment period comes up, we do have students that apply. Sometimes they get in, sometimes they don't, but this is a moving target for us. So we're anticipating about an $18,000 increase in that area. And then I mentioned our third form of bus transportation in the district. We have about $15,000 that we budgeted for repairs for the buses that we manage in the school district, and Mr. Costin can really talk about those buses and how we operate that operation. The next slide demonstrates increases by category, and this is really taking a look at salaries. If you take a look at the first line, it's certificated salaries, and this is relative to the 772 staff members that we have in the district that are under a license. So if you have a license in the district and you take a look at column and lane changes and cost of living increases, that budget is up $3.1 million. That's, that accounts for the 772 staff members approximately that we have in that area. Clerical, we have 75 members in the clerical area. Those salaries are up $64,000. Other salaries are up about $402,000. That's about 319 staff members. That includes custodians, paraprofessionals, and anyone that doesn't classify under clerical or certificated staff. Those are other salaries. Contracted services, the slide before, if you take the total of all of those increments that I talked about in the earlier slide, it comes up to $806,000. That's contractual services as a whole. Supplies and materials are up $7,453, and other expenses were down about $12,000. And other expenses, when it comes to the budget, is relative to professional development, and our professional development line is down about $12,000. Take a look at our budget as a whole. This is our budget, not including insurance. So this is all categories, and these categories are really not dictated by the school department. These are categories that the state uses, and these are categorized account identifiers that the state uses so that there's an opportunity to do comparison from district to district. So we really are aligned with what the state would like us and how we'd report this. The first area is certificated salaries, which is 64% of the budget, is about $60 million. $60,275,000, and that's for certificated salaries. Like I said before, that's everyone in the district that has a license. Keep in mind that in order to be in a school system and teach in a professional capacity in a school system, you have to have a license, and that's what Patty Frye's Human Resources Office does manage. So we have a lot of staff members, about 775, that makes up that number. Let's take a look at our next category. That's clerical salaries across the district at 3% of this pie. That's about $2.6 million. We look at our next, it's other salaries, which is about $11.4 million. Once again, other salaries, that's custodial, that's paraprofessionals. Custodial services is pretty logical on what they do. We also have skilled craftsmen, and one thing that we're fortunate is we have a small troop of skilled craftsmen that they go throughout the district and they, we have a plumber, we have a electrician, we have HVAC, a number of gentlemen, it's a small number. They go around the district and they do a lot of repairs on our own. That's included in that, and that's about 12% of the budget, it's $11.4 million. The next one is contracted services. So everything in our district that has a contract, whether it's a copier, whether it's a special education placement for a student, whether it's a bus, and that's tied to a contract that Mr. Costin's office manages, is $16.6 million, about 17% of the budget. The next one is supplies and materials. Supplies and materials for the entire district to run the entire Plymouth Public Schools is about 3%, that's $2.6 million. So when you start taking a look at anything that we do to change budgets, supplies is very vulnerable, and I think that's one of the things that we really try to work with, is trying to get a per pupil expense so we can make sure that kids actually get that allocation for supplies and materials. And the last expense is its other expenses, and it's 1%, which is relative to professional development. And the high majority of professional development that we have and we offer to the staff in the district is contractual. Within each of our contracts, there are mandated professional development requirements that we do have, and some of these provisions are tied to this particular line item. That's about $822,000, and as I mentioned before, it's down about $12,000 from the prior year. That's the only line that has a decrease from prior year. The next slide demonstrates insurance, and I think this is what really takes our budget from the previous slide to $117,435. So that's the entire school district budget. When you put this budget together, I'm going to just cover the three additional pieces to this graph or to this chart opposed to the one I just showed you. The first one is active employees' health care, which every employee that takes insurance in the Plymouth Public Schools, the insurance is about 12% of this pie, and it's about $14 million. That's the town's contribution. That doesn't include the employee contribution. The next is retired employed health. I think you're aware that the town offers an employed health benefit. That's about 7% of this budget, and it's about $8.2 million. That's what the town is contributing for retiree health benefit for school department employees only. In addition, we have workman's comp and disability life, which is about 1% of this demonstrated budget. It's about $604,000. So when you take a look at what it takes to run the entire Plymouth Public Schools, it's about $117.4 million, and that is soup to nuts from entry all the way to retirement. So you can kind of see how that, how that all fits together. This slide demonstrates the trend of Chapter 70, and I think everyone is familiar with how Chapter 70 works. Back in 2007, we got $1.7 million in state aid for education. Chapter 70 is state aid for education. It comes from state tax. There's a great debate on the Chapter 70 formula, if it's adequate, if it's not adequate. I think most school committees and towns would say that it's inadequate. The Plymouth Public Schools gets about, excuse me, the town of Plymouth gets about $26 million of Chapter 70 aid. There's a portion of that that goes to the charter school. The Plymouth Public Schools is left with about 20, under $20 million of state aid. This is the trending that you will see that's happened since 2007. In 2007, we got $1.7 million of state aid, increased from prior year, okay? And you can see it went down to 1.1 million, $78,000, 1.8 million, and this just shows the trend of where it has, it has gone up or gone down. I think we can all remember 2010, we had a situation where the governor enacted nine C cuts, where Chapter 70 was reduced in October, November of that particular year, and we actually were reduced in state aid by $427,000 from the prior year. You can see we increased a little bit that next year, and you can see that trending all the way up until this current year. This current year, we received $442,000 of increased state aid based on purely the formula increase. So we did receive $442,000. Keep in mind that we also put into the budget another increase because we were projecting additional FTE counts for our kindergarten students. So next year, you'll see a significant increase from 400, excuse me, from $442,000 to over a million dollars in state aid because of those kindergarten students. This number we carried in the presentation from our budget from last year. Keep in mind, if there is a change to Chapter 70 and the formula for Chapter 70, if we do get additional dollars, this number, this number will change. But one thing that we discussed back at my office is we don't want to lose a sight that our budget is built on the cost of education. The town has then reimbursed the additional dollar amount. So our budget demonstrated today is demonstrating the actual cost of full day K. The town will get reimbursed after October 1 of next year, additional dollars because now we have demonstrated students. Our program is in existence for over a year, and then those students will have a higher value on Chapter 70. So if we move to the next slide, this is a slide that we have done a lot of work on, and I give Mr. Montron and Mr. Costin a great deal of credit for this, and I think you can see the trend. Back in 2010, when we first started looking, actually, we started looking at solar and energy conservation probably about 2008, so it was back in here. 2010, we really started looking at how we could convert a lot of our systems from a traditional means of purchasing electricity and fuel to really tapering off, and you can see that we have made major changes from oil. Back in 2010, we had about $692,000 we used in oil. For this particular budget that you have in front of you, we budgeted $45,000 for oil. So you can see the dependency on oil has gone down dramatically, and that's because we actually converted from oil to natural gas, and you can see the trend line there. So we've, we've actually been able to convert our systems. This particular school, back in 2008, was all-electric. So it was Federal Furnace West, South Elementary, and Indian Brook. They were all, they were all electricity, and those have all been converted to propane or natural gas from electricity. So it's been a significant decrease for us, and along that trend line, you also notice that we did look at our electricity, and this is right when we started putting solar in. You can see that trajectory downwards, and we actually started doing solar, solar fields, solar farms, and you can notice that as of today, we were spending $2,740,000 on electricity back in 2010. This budget shows a $925,000 price tag to power every single building in the district, and it's been reduced, and it's actually been cut in half. So that's a major win for the district. It's a lot of work that's been gone into that. But if you can take a look at our overall cost on electricity, back in 2010, we spent $3 million on it, on all utilities. This budget represents $1.5 million. So we did cut our energy costs in half, and those are long-term savings. And as you can see, we've realized those savings now for four years in a row. So our model going back in time is really paying off, and we're very proud of that. So just to give you an idea of what we've been doing to try to save some money, be more responsible for resources, but as you can see, it's starting to play out, and we feel very good about the future for this model. So with that said, I'd like to turn the next part of the presentation over to Mr. Costin, and he's going to present a financial summary. So, Mr. Costin, I'll give you the remote and you can have at it. Yeah?
Thank you very much. Good evening. I have the pleasure of now looking at the budget in whole, and Dr. Mestes has done an excellent job of noting where all the increases and changes in the budget. So these are the, these next four charts will be charts that are annually published in the annual budget book, but it gives us a really good overview. The first chart shows the budget in total. Essentially, the budget is a 4.89% budget, $94,512,736, and you can see that the pie is divided between non-salary at 21% and 79% of our budget requests are all salaries. This next chart, what we, what we're obligated to do, and you notice the numbers, we have object codes, and the Department of Education requires that every school district in the state of Massachusetts break their object codes and do their accounting in a, what's called a UMass system, not because it's from UMass, but it's United Unified Municipal Accounting System. And that requires us to put salaries in object codes, 1, 2, 3s, and our non-salary object codes in 4, 5, 6s, which are contracted services, supplies, materials. As Dr. Mestes said, salaries are certified salaries, clerical salaries, other salaries. So that'll be the theme going through all of the budget presentation. When you see those, those numbers on the end, the object codes, they'll explain really what's in those budget line items. So you can see this is broken out a little bit further through what are certificated salaries, clerical salaries, other salaries, and then contracted services, supplies, and other expenses to get the same number. This next number, I gotta get new glasses, I think. This next, next chart really breaks out a cost center summary. The cost center summary takes all the costs associated in every cost center, the 1s through 6s, and shows the comparison of what was budgeted, what was expended in the previous year, what was budgeted this year, and what is the requested budget for next year. So it gives a good overview of the district by the cost center. And this next chart is a representation of, we break out that, each cost center in detail now, so you'll see the 1s, 2s, 3s, 4s, 5s, 6s within each cost center. So it gives you a little bit more analysis, ways to look at it within each cost center. So it kind of shows you again where the, where the increases are, what the expenditures were, what the requests are for this year, and it gives you a little bit of platform to do a little bit of analysis and understanding of what, what's in that budget. We have the order of presentation for tonight.
And now we, through Mr. Begley, we have our elementary cost center managers are here tonight. We'll start with Cold Spring Elementary, and while they make their way up here, actually...
Are we doing facilities first?
I'm sorry, we have Mr. Montron. So I know if I don't call him first, we'll have a problem, so. Montron, if you could come on up. Arthur Montron is our Director of Facilities, and he is here tonight to present his budget.
I'm so easy to forget.
I was with you all day, so.
Good evening. I'm Arthur Montron. I'm the Director of Facilities. I'm here to report on Cost Center 359, which is on page 88 of your budget book, 88 and 89. We maintain 17 buildings throughout the district. These are the costs associated with maintaining those buildings on a daily basis. As Dr. Mastis explained earlier, we do have tradespeople. We have six tradespeople that go around and actually save the district quite a bit of money from not having to go out for electricians, carpenters, plumbers, and HVAC technicians. We do a lot of that work in-house. Cost center 359 on the Buildings and Ground Services is made up of 13 full-time equivalents, including two secretaries, the tradespeople, and maintenance floaters. As you look at that budget, the big increase is in contracted services, as Dr. Mastis alluded to earlier. This year, we're getting ready to go out to bid again, or for next year, I should say. We're getting ready to go out again for our maintenance service contracts, for boilers, generators, wastewater. All of those contracts are up. So, that's the increase that we're expecting through the overall process, plus the increase in goods and services for any other contracted services such as security systems, card key systems, things of that nature. Supplies and materials are the supplies and materials needed to clean the buildings on a daily basis, including cleaning supplies, equipment, and things of that nature. Moving down the list, we have water and sewer treatment. That's looking at about a, almost a 3% increase for the wastewater treatment plan at South High South Middle School. And then, it's just salaries for myself and my assistant. It's an overall increase of 3.96%. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot, there's one more. Energy conservation on page 90. Those budgets have, as you may or may not know, we, we lost our energy manager two years ago now. And those budgets have been incorporated into other district budgets. So, there is nothing there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, suggestion for the future. Maybe a column that has the page numbers on it. On the, on, so as, as everybody's coming to the table, we can get to the right.
Get to the detail.
Yeah, we can get to the right one.
Okay, so.
Little thing. Yeah, there's the summary, and then there's the detail. But in, so in the summary one, so Mr. Montron was kind enough to tell us the exact page number so I could get there real fast, but.
If you click on the hyperlink, those of us in the electronic school board, if you go to the cost center and the name, if you click on it, it actually jumps you right to the, the detail sheet.
Okay.
So.
Give me that again.
Mrs. Victory actually created hyperlinks from every.
Well, that's better.
Cost center.
Thank you.
So, it, if, if you click on that, you know, cost center, if they give, for example, Cold Spring Elementary, which is our next one, is, is 305, cost center 305. If you click on that, it takes you right to the detail or to the summary of those budgets. At the bottom of each, at the bottom of each budget section, there's a return to table of contents tab, and it takes you back to the table of contents, and you can click the next.
Not on an iPad, apparently.
Okay.
They're not active notes on the iPad. They're just static text.
All right.
Rub it in.
So, everyone that has the laptops, it's working, yeah.
All right, so, we'll continue. Okay. So, what I would ask our cost center managers tonight, when you present, if you could identify the page within the budget book that your cost center is on, that way, the members of the school committee can actually reference them a lot easier than trying to page through them, all right?
Sorry.
No problem. With that said, I'd like to invite the next cost center managers to the table. We have our elementary cost center managers are here tonight, starting with Cold Spring Elementary, and that's Christine Morgan. So, we'll take a moment to get everybody settled, and our cost center managers will be here tonight to, to present. Yeah. If you, on the table of contents, if you, if you looked.
It doesn't tell you where the number is, though.
It's page three.
Yeah, you're right. If I hit, if I hit Cold Spring, it takes me right to Cold Spring. It's working on his. You have to get that tablet.
It hasn't been updated in a while.
Yeah, if you, if you click, yeah, it's a hyperlink. It should work, I don't know. Okay.
Is this on? Okay, great. I believe it's page three. I'm Chris Morgan from Cold Spring Elementary School. Thank you for having us here tonight. Just to tell you a little bit about Cold Spring. Cold Spring is, is a Title I school with a population of 246. By the end of this week, we'll have 248 students, which is 196 families. And this year, we became a leader in me school, which is based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. So, out of the 248 students, 111 students participate in our free and reduced lunch program, which is 45% of our population. By the end of this week, we will have 20 students who are in our ELL program. And the language of our families is Brazilian, Portuguese, Spanish, and Vietnamese. We currently service students in grades K through 5. Each of the grade levels have two classrooms, with the exception of grade 4, which had to increase to three classrooms this year. And to accommodate that need, we had to transition our computer lab to our classroom. And so, we are currently utilizing and sharing every room and every space within our building for instructional purposes. We do not house any programs within our building. But I, I would like to be able to recognize, and I think it's important to recognize, several community partnerships that have donated to Cold Spring that help us support and sustain our programming. Our PTA provides money and funding for field trips, our field trip bussings, program funding and classroom supplies, sound systems, and our leader in me initiative. Additionally, Verk Mobile, in our local community, has contributed $500 for math and science supplies, along with Harvard Pilgrim Health has done the same. Walmart has contributed to Cold Spring for classroom supplies. And Entergy has also donated books for grades, students in grades 1 through 3, so they can build up their library, personal libraries at home. And the Lions Club has donated, as well as Smart Pack, who donated backpacks for 30 of our students this year. Cold Spring was built in 1951 and is meticulously maintained by our head custodian Dennis Borsari and our night custodian Roger Cobb. And although they do a wonderful job, the building is in need of repair from painting of the out-of-areas, fixing tile floors, maintaining leaky roofs, and upkeep of the grounds. So, keeping with the strict guidelines of the same level service, we need to keep in mind some future needs for our building that will be coming up, such as repairing student desks and tables, providing for additional textbooks for the increase in our student population, maintaining those leaks that cause damage to our walls and windows, repairing fences, lighting the parking lots, and also our teacher stations. They were attained by a Title I grant several years ago, so those will be in need of repair or upkeep in the future. So, as I said, our student population, we're increasing at Cold Spring. Last year, we did not lose any students to the charter school or any other private institutions. And in our area, we've seen an increase in the growth with building of construction of new homes and turnover and market sales in our neighborhood. So, looking forward to our, this budget for this year, it will be based on a projection of 245 students. Department allocations were based on projected student growth and numbers for next year. You will notice a little uptake in our service contract line. That was due to, we had two photocopiers that were, need to be put on service contracts moving forward. And you will notice like a small decrease in the lines such as speech and language, where this year, we purchased testing materials, but we won't need to purchase that this year. We'll just need to maintain those programs. And we allocated some funding to our general ed lines to keep up with the increased costs of supplies, paper and ink. So, although we stayed within our strict guidelines for the level same service budget, we will need to, and I look forward to in the future, addressing some of the future needs of our school. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Trina Camaro.
Just one, one thing to point out. I know if you're not familiar with educational jargon, ELL is, ELE or ELL is English language learners. And at times, when I came, when I came to Plymouth many years ago, the entire district had under 40 students of English language education. That's at Cold Spring Elementary alone, we have 20. I know I heard a number at North High School, I think, and Principal McLean can tell us a little bit later. I think just at North High School alone, we have about 50 students just at North that are identified English language education learners. So, at that point, you can see a change in that dynamics over, over the time. With that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Camaro.
Thank you, thank you very much, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
There we go. So, I am the principal of Federal Furnace Elementary School, and I'll tell you a little bit about our student population. We currently have about 413 students. We've been relatively, is it working? Relatively level in our student population. So, we haven't gone up much, we haven't gone down. We're projected to be about the same for next year of our population. We fluctuate between 35 and just under 40% of our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, when, you know, 1% is about four students, it goes up and down quite quickly. We do house a program for students on the autism spectrum that has been in place at Federal Furnace for about 15 years. We are a Title I school as well. We have 21 classrooms, grades K through 5. And one change this past year, when technology came into the building, computer labs, our population was down in number. That was many years ago. And as we have increased and have housed full-day kindergarten now, we transferred our computer lab out of a classroom, made that back into a classroom. So, the computer is, computers are actually in the library again, the Library Media Center as they were originally designed. That is a space crunch for us, but we are making that work as we very much welcome having all of our students with us for a full day. We also want to recognize that we prepared a level service budget, and we have not asked for any increases in service. And we, we do want to recognize all of the monies that come into our school in addition to what's in our budget. And we want to thank all the people responsible for that. Our PTA, I looked at our, our last four years of PTA budgets, and they put over, they put about $20,000 into our schools each year between funding all of our field trips, including the busing, and any admissions or any other associated costs with that. Also, cultural arts programs that come in, such as the pilgrims or, or science, Museum of Science programs on wheels that come into our building, that is all funded through our cultural arts. They also helped to provide the funding for our community garden program, see if where students can learn about sustainable gardening. So, thank, thank you very much to our Federal Furnace PTA for that. Last year, we also had another funding source, our newly created student council. Our student council raised over $8,000 last year. That also went to program enhancements and cultural arts type, type initiatives. Another community partnership that we benefit from greatly is our partnership with South Bay Community Services that provides counselors to our students actually in the school. So, that began about two and a half years ago. The district initiated that, and it was through a grant for two years, and our schools have continued that. That partnership passed the two-year mark. This is our third year, and that is no cost. There is nowhere in our budget you will see a cost for that, though it does require space because counseling services require privacy. So, that does take up office space. We currently have one full-time counselor in our building, and we have requested a second full-time counselor through that program because of the emotional needs of our students. It hasn't yet been filled, but South Bay is working with us on that. So, that's quite a bit of money that is not reflected in our local budget. And then, one more thing I wanted to mention as far as our school benefiting from funding that is not a part of our local budget, is that we are in a two-year contract relationship with Harvard's Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative, and they are providing contractual services, consulting services, professional development to our staff because we saw a grant. It's actually not a grant, I apologize. It's a, a research study that we're participating in about the process of becoming a safe and supportive school. So, there is a national organization that's funding that research, and what comes with that is the two-year consultation services and professional development for our staff. And we've benefited greatly from this. We've seen wonderful results in student, staff, and parent surveys on that. As far as future needs, because our, our budget was built on level service, we do see the needs behaviorally and emotionally of our students. So, though our population isn't growing, we tend to need staff such as counseling staff, behavioral staff, and whatnot to help meet those needs. I've mentioned a little bit about the space because of the computer lab and also the counseling services that take up space. But we are, like Cold Spring, maxing out all of our, our space right now. I want to make sure that I don't forget anything, but I really don't have anything that interesting in the budget because it's exactly, as everybody has said, everything's related, any increases are directly related to salary increases, those salary increases from columns and lane changes, as well as the contractual services. And the supplies are all based on the per pupil recommendations of the coordinators. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
I apologize, it was on page 11. Forgot to say that at the beginning.
You're right, I found where they are. Nobody has to worry about it. I got it.
Other than the, the future needs for behavioral council, are there any other needs that you feel that you would need for the next fiscal year budget?
I don't think so. We've, we've provided the level services, like Principal Morgan expressed, the, the computers, you know, are aging as well. But I believe that Mr. McLean is going to address that later through the technology and a more comprehensive system. But that's a need that's, that I've brought up personally in the past, that those, our computers do age. And so, that needs to be looked at, just much like textbooks on a rotating cycle. And I know the coordinators are going to address that as well. So, nothing specific to our building, just those district needs.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Wilson. I'm the principal of Hedge Elementary School. Hedge was built in 1910. It's one, it's the oldest operating elementary school in Plymouth at 106 years old. We currently have 216 children attending the school, so it is the smallest elementary school in Plymouth as well. However, it is very diverse, and I want to share a little bit about its diversity because that parallels to where some of the staffing needs are for our building. So, currently, about 68% of our students are receiving free and reduced lunch. And if you compare that to my colleague, Dan, over here, he, his building runs at about 18% free and reduced lunch. So, our, when you also look at our students and you look at the high needs based on the Department of Education, 57.9% of our students are rated at high needs. So, more than half of our children are rated at risk before they walk into the door. 17% of our students are receiving special education, and 6% of our students have a documented disability that we're able to accommodate through accommodation plans based on 504. We also have a large growing English language population, as so does Chris Morgan, and you'll hear Mr. Spencer speak to it as well. So, we're one of three schools that runs an ELL program in the school, which was a mandate from the Department of Education, and the district was able to hire a full-time English language. So, we're one of three schools that runs an ELL program in the school, which was a mandate from the Department of Education, and the district was able to hire a full-time English Language educator for us four years ago. So, she's servicing nineteen percent of our students who are speaking another language, we sign it's English, as their first language. One thing that we've incorporated into our building this year is a program called Responsive Classroom, which is similar to the Leader and Me and the Trauma and Learning that Mrs. Camaro just spoke of. It's a program that looks at our school community and provides a safe and supportive environment for our children to learn. So, our children are coming to us with a lot of different backgrounds and stresses before they walk in the door, and we're providing a, a community of learners in support for them. In order for us to do that, we did provide training for ninety percent of our staff, they came out over the summer on their own time, and we utilized a grant to be able to pay for that training, which cost about twenty thousand dollars. In regards to that training, we also were able to provide some support staff to help incorporate the needs that our children need. And we used grant funds again to hire a part-time adjustment counselor and a board-certified behavior analysis, and we call that a BCBA, to work with our students throughout the day and help students with regulating their emotions, providing them with the skills that they need to be able to access the curriculum. In addition to that, we have received a lot of support from outside communities, businesses, again, Verk Enterprises, Big Lots Store here in Plymouth, Zion Lutheran Church around the corner in North Plymouth, they provide us with a lot of materials and finances to help with after-school tutoring for our students. So, if you were to look at Hedge on the Department of Education's website, you'd see that Hedge is not performing to the proficiency that the state would like us to. But when you look at the children that attend Hedge, you'll see that they're showing and demonstrating amazing growth while they're with us, they're just not meeting the scores that the state would like us to have. And that all has to do with the additional support that we have in the school, in the services that we can provide for them, which a lot of those services are through our Title I grant, and it's close to two hundred thousand dollars in addition to what the regular budget has here in front of you tonight. When you look at our building, as I said, it's a hundred and six years old, the latest addition completed in nineteen-twenty-three. There is no more room for us to utilize in the building, we're utilizing every single inch that we have. We have twelve classroom teachers, running twelve classrooms in grades K through five, with one additional kindergarten classroom over at West Elementary School right now. So, we're utilizing every classroom we possibly can. We broke down our computer lab, so now we're having computers in the classroom. And if you've ever been to Hedge, you'll see that to get from one side of the building to the other, you actually walk through the gymnasium. So, as the gym teacher is teaching a gym class, and also the music teacher, because it serves as our music classroom as well, you're walking through the class as you're walking from one side of the building to the other. Our library is also utilized as an art room when it's not being utilized as a library. So, every space is used double or triple its size. And there's no, there's no, we can't do any additions to our building right now, because if we were to do that, we would have to bring everything up to code. And so, that's not going to be able to happen for us. So, we're doing the best that we can with the space that we have. It is a well-solid structure, although there is a little slanting, as any old building has over time, this, it has remained the same, it's very unique. There is a couple of things that do need to happen to the building, there is the original slate roof that we, and we believe was done in nineteen-twenty-three. And there are slate shingles that are often getting blown off in some of our storms, and that does need to get replaced, as well as a cupola that is providing a little bit of leakage, and we keep trying to pack, patch it. But we will need to bring in existing contractors to be able to reach that height of our building. Our field on our playground is mostly sand, you can think of the movie Sand Lot, it's a lot of sand, which eventually will, we really need to repair that because we want the children to play outside, but it's tricky for them to be out there playing in the sand because it can be, they can slip and fall, and we want that to be safe for them. Another thing we didn't put in our budget is we do need a new sound system. It is, we do use a microphone and a, a speakers to be able to provide programming for our students. We try to bring the school together as a whole school at least once a month, and it's been a little challenging for us to be able to project some of the presentations that we're doing for the children. When you look through the budget, you'll see that the only increases that we have is through salaries based on contractual obligations, it runs from three to ten percent of our increases for an average. And then, you'll see that our supplies have gone down, and that has to do with our enrollment, which last year, our original budget included our kindergarten numbers. And so, for this year's budget, it, it doesn't, our, we have one large class that's going to be moving up, and so that we'll be able to bring our kindergarten students back. And our supply numbers have gone down because our numbers have been, will actually go down next year. And that should be it, any other, any questions?
Any questions from members?
Thank you.
Thank you, Indian Brook.
Thank you, everyone. First, I'd like to, before I begin looking at my budget, I wanted to mention Mrs. Silakko about keeping the rec center, helping to keep the rec center open. As you know, we have a partnership with them that we were able to support. Mr. Maestis, Dr. Maestis, and Mr. Costin arranged for buses, and we have probably twenty to forty students daily that attend the rec center Monday through Friday, so thank you very much for that support. Indian Brook, currently, we have five hundred and seventy-two students, but we are projecting a slight decrease. If you were to, and I'll even give the page number, if you were to look at all of our budgets under the, one of the reports on page sixteen, almost all of the supply accounts, you'll see are in parentheses, and that's due to a decrease, a projected decrease in enrollment for our building next year. So, all the other costs, again, as Dr. Maestis pointed out in his presentation, are connected to salaries, so that is the point of increases across the board. Indian Brook, currently, as I said, we have five seventy-two, we're projecting about five hundred and forty students for next year, K to five building. One of the things, though, that people have said before me, my colleagues, that staffing really hasn't changed because what we have done is some programmatic changes. One of the things that Plymouth, I think, has been great at supporting is bringing students back to their neighborhood school that might otherwise attend a program or a specialized school. But that does require additional support, for example, a few years ago, we received an additional counselor. So, I have a, a school psychologist as well as an adjustment counselor, and they support many of the students in there that need that additional support. So, those are some of the things that, that have helped greatly in the changes that we've seen in student populations over the last several years. Indian Brook, by comparison to Hedge, is only forty years old. So, it is one of the newer buildings. Being at Indian Brook for so many years, I can say that over the, I have to first speak of the wonderful support we have received of the town over the last several years. You know, we had, it's been a long time now, but we received new roofs, HVAC systems, lockers. We've had a lot of support that has helped maintain the building. But like my colleagues have said before me, and I'm sure will say after me, that support continues to be needed, unfortunately. One of the things that Indian Brook has that none of the other buildings have is modular wing. I think we're the last school in the district that has a modular wing. The interior of it has been well-maintained, it is in impeccable shape, but unfortunately, the exterior is starting to show its, its age with the T-111 siding, and of course, it's, it could definitely use a new exterior. Our gym floor, although, I mean, and many of these things have been on capital outlay, but it's like anything, we, we know we wait on the list, it's by priority, and as I said, we have managed it greatly over the years, so. But some of the things that need to be addressed would be, again, as I said, the exterior of our modular wing, gymnasium floor, and our parking lot. What's difficult is, for a large building, when we have any kind of events, Ms. Badger knows, I think she was there on Saturday at one of our events, but parking becomes very difficult because we're on state road. So, it's not as if we have parking, you know, quickly or accessible outside of what our parking lot can handle, and it's not adequate, so. Another area that I know Ms. Camaro mentioned was about technology. I've always been a strong advocate, as everybody knows, the school committee before you, around technology, and I think it's important to integrate it for the students today. We have been very fortunate, it's not as if we do not provide quite a bit of technology in our district, it's just maintaining that over the years as equipment gets older, and I know that Mr. McLean will be talking about that a little later on tonight. The one thing I do want to mention, too, is our PTA, as well as the town, support for things outside of the curricular areas has just been phenomenal at Indian Brook, as like in most of the elementary, as well as I'm sure all the other schools within our district. Our PTA has been, over the years, the support, for example, they allocate about eleven thousand dollars yearly for cultural arts in our building. So, think of that over the last four years, as Ms. Camaro was saying, that's forty-four thousand dollars just in cultural arts. We have a brand-new playground that we thought that would be a two-year process, they were able to raise the funds in a year, and now we're working on the field project. The amount of support, they do monthly programs for our students each and every month. In addition, they also raise funds, they just did a Christmas fair of which they donate, they're donating about two thousand dollars to the South Shore Women's Foundation to support student, children for the holidays. So, our PTA, as I said, over the years, I've been there, they have never levered in their support and dedication, and what they've provided our students and the school has just been unbelievable. And as well as many of the town, community organizations, Rotary, I know we're in a partnership with them right now with our field projects, so we've just received so much support outside. And those, those are the things that don't, are not visible in a budget. So, I want to make sure that we do give them a lot of recognition. But as I said, our budget really is not changing, it's actually going down slightly as our population goes down. So, if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Indian Brook? Okay, thank you. Manamet.
Thank you very much. Manamet Elementary serves students from grades K to five, we have three hundred and three... We have a K to five school, and we serve a population of three hundred and three students. Currently, thirty-four percent of our students receive free reduced-priced lunch, which means that Manamet is categorized as a Title I targeted assistance school. There's a total of thirty-two certificated staff members at our school, twenty-nine of which are funded through the district budget, and then three of whom are funded through Title I funding. And we have another twelve classified staff members as well, all of whom are paid out of the school budget. We do not presently have any district-wide programming at Manamet Elementary School. As far as the school itself, it was built in nineteen-fifty-two originally, the whole front face of the school that you see was built in nineteen-fifty-two, and then it was added on to, the primary wing was added on in nineteen-sixty-three. Then again, in the early nineteen-seventies, the back-left portion of the school was put on with modulators. Those were then made permanent back in ninety-nine, as well as several specials, specialist areas, art, music, PE, and special education rooms were added back in ninety-nine during a major renovation at that point as well. There have been no newly added programmatic changes at Manamet. As with the other elementary schools, we've recently added full-day K. Going back a few years further, we've added some coaching positions and, as well as instrumental music. We've tried to be as resourceful as possible to meet programmatic needs and seeking funds available outside the school budget. Our Home and School Association is a great example of that, they're a small group of committed parents, they do amazing things for us. When we needed a school sign, they went out and raised four thousand dollars and provided a school sign for us. We also sit with them annually to schedule guest presenters to come in and provide enrichment support for students through different assemblies. And then, they also raise thousands and thousands of dollars annually to help subsidize school field trips as well. As is, as is the case with all the other elementary schools, we receive services that are not included within the school budget through South Bay Mental Health. We're new to that this year, and it's been a great success, and the numbers are growing and growing in terms of students accessing that support. You will not see that in the budget. Our, it's a, it really fills a void for us because we currently have one school psychologist and no designated school counselors outside of that. So, for that school psychologist to do all the special education testing and be the sole provider of any sort of counseling services in the building, it's, it's a real challenge otherwise. So, we're thrilled to have South Bay helping us. We've also been aggressive in pursuing grant funding to support programming. Without annual grant funding from the Entergy Corporation, we would not be able to run our Fall After-School Theater Workshop Program. By the way, this Thursday and Friday, Elf Jr., the Musical is taking place, so tickets will be available at the door, there's also a matinee. And then, we typically apply for seven or eight other grants throughout the course of each year, including grants that we received from the Lowell Institute, ARC-inspired teacher grants, the yellow school bus grant. We recently benefited through the donation of an additional Chromebook cart in memory of a former staff member, Susan Agnew, her family donated that cart. So, the Chromebook carts, the more we get, the more are out there on a daily basis, they're all in use throughout the course of the day because unfortunately, a lot of the desktop computers that we have really reached the end of their usefulness in, in, in most ways, they're used in a very limited capacity at this point. Another major effort has been our ongoing two-year campaign to build a playground, where our goal is to raise sixty thousand dollars. One of our top donors at this point has been the Friends of the Manamet Youth Center, so thank you very much for that, we're hoping to reach that goal this summer. One way or another, regardless of the funds that we raise, we'll be building this summer, it's a question of how close we get to that goal, none of that is included within the budget. And then, one of the significant upcoming needs inside the building that would not fit within the proposed level services budget is for an office copier. The office copier is presently eleven years old, and it's, it's reaching the end of its life. On the exterior of the building, one of the big upgrades that will be needed sooner rather than later, hopefully, is all of the trim and gutter, the wooden, wooden gutters all throughout the building and the trim. Those have been petitioned for through capital outlay. And then, looking at proposed budget numbers, in almost all of the accounts, there's a reduction in the supply lines, that's due to the fact that we're projected to reduce by thirteen students going into next year, and that's the result of a larger class moving on to middle school. At this point, if you have any questions for me about the budget, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Mr. Camaro.
Outside of the copier and the exterior of the building, what other future needs that you would like to incorporate into this year's budget, if need be?
I don't think it's so much a need as a, as something where at some point, we'd love to be able to add to what we have for our social studies materials in terms of some of the text resources that are available for the upgrades, updating those.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question.
Yep, go right ahead.
And maybe this is in regards to Mr. Costin or Dr. Maestis. I'm hearing a lot of the principals talking about grants that they receive. Do the schools, the individual schools have to apply for those grants, or is there someone within the school administration that helps with those grant programs?
Yeah, I, I can answer that question. I think a lot of grants, the majority of grants that have been discussed tonight, with the exception of Title I, are actually facilitated at the building level. Title I is a federal program facilitates the state that, that we apply for every year. And again, you're limited to how you can, how you can have access to those funds based on your student population. But we are always looking for grants that are either local, state, or federal grants that really fit into a category. I think one of the difficulties that we have in the community is that our, in order to qualify for some of the higher-end grants, our free and reduced lunch numbers as a district don't really meet the federal threshold to really qualify for some of the larger grants, but that never stops us from taking a look at opportunities. I think the South Shore, excuse me, the, the counseling grant that was mentioned earlier, that was brought forward through a collaboration, and we've, we've been able to, to fill a gap, you know, based on a counseling organization that we partnered with to actually bring services into the school. So, I think that's really helped fill a void, but I can, I think one of the biggest voids you'll hear from the elementary principals, and, and all the way up to the high school, is, is going to be facility maintenance, big issues, not internal cleaning, but it's going to be facility external and also refurbishment of technology. And I think our assistant engineer tonight will probably give you... And I think our system engineer tonight will probably give you an insight on where we are with the numbers and age of equipment.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? And Nathaniel Morton?
Thank you. And I think I have the pleasure of going sixth on the panel here because I've had many expert colleagues come before me, kind of laying the groundwork. It's sort of like being in that fabulous baseball team lineup, you know, just wait for everybody else to do the work in front of you. But I'll give you a little bit of the specifics around Nathaniel Morton. So our school population this year currently stands at 591 students. We have put ourselves in the top of the list there, so we have the highest enrollment for K to five in the district. It's across 27 classrooms. We have about 30% students who are designated as low-income, 12% that are identified special education students, and 5% who are ELL, English Language Learners. In addition to the 27 classroom teachers that we have, we have seven moderate special needs teachers, two of which service district-wide programs for our students who have high academic need. It's called the Bridge Program, was formerly known as the Basic Skills Program. In addition to that, we have 15 professional FTE positions that work with students across our grades to either support them academically or socio-emotional growth for them. We have had, as was mentioned earlier, transitional change in terms of programs and the fact of being identified as an ELL magnet school, in addition with Hedge and Cold Spring. It's a new program for us within the last two to three years. We have a total of 28 ELL students, with about half of them receiving what we would say direct service now, and the other half who had been in the program prior but now are still designated as ELL students but not receiving that direct service. Nathaniel Morton is second in terms of active, I guess, schools in terms of age. We are at the 103 mark, but we do have a renovation that was done 83 years ago. So we have continued to try to provide the maintenance and upgrades to keep the spaces looking as great as they do, and that is just a testament, as was mentioned earlier, to the facilities department, and specifically our own custodians just do a great job. And I think our students, too, take care of the building that they're in. I think we lovingly refer to Nathaniel Morton sometimes, or I do at least, the Thomas's English Muffin because it has so many nooks and crannies in it, and feel like we are using those spaces as much as we can. We did reallocate some of those spaces recently, sort of removed a conference room to turn that into a student support space, and then reworked an office space that we had to make it be a conference or meeting room that our staff can work in and also we can have family meetings in. We have worked, as has been discussed by everyone else, to create a level service budget and follow not only the budget guidelines but try to reach our overarching goals of school improvement plan and the district strategic plan. But I think everyone else has put forth before that, similarly here at Nathaniel Morton, we not only look at our own budget requests but have been able to then offering the type of enriching experiences that our students get through exterior supports, like community agencies, grants that we're just sort of asked about, especially the Plymouth Ed Foundation. We've been trying to take advantage of that group recently, and of course, our PTA. It's amazing when sort of looking back at some of this, the PTA consistently provides between $10,000 to $15,000 annually over the last five years. Great enrichment supports. There's no family that has to put forth admission to either field trip admission prices or bus costs to go on field trips. We also have been moving towards in-school field trips to try to avoid that transportation fee, and so they're there to support those types of things coming in. They've reached out to extend an initiative we've had recently around what we call sensory tools to try to meet the needs of different learners, and interactive smart boards that are in some of our rooms, and R S residency, and also adding to our literacy material. So they've really been very active in the funds they raise and how we use them. Within our school budget, there's an increase of about 5% overall, which is attributable mostly to salary increases, some adjustments to materials for the enrollment. We're projected to be 582 next year, which is higher than the projected 572 for this year, even though we are at 591. So somewhere in there, you know, as we've all talked about, fluctuation of students is a moving target for us, but we have been pretty consistent at that level over the last three or four years, and I think the advent of full-day K being here is bringing some students that may have been going to other settings before. We'll have to sort of keep seeing that need and where that is. The other piece that added to our overall cost is that we did secure a three-year lease for some copiers to moving on, so that made a line item increase for us. As I mentioned before, the historic status of our school, it's been addressed and maintained when possible. We've had some recent upgrades that have really made a huge difference, and so that our capital outlay has been there in windows that have been put in, individual classrooms with their flooring being replaced, exterior painting. But there definitely is going to continue to be current and coming needs that aren't necessarily expressed in the budget. More of the individual classrooms flooring is being replaced, really looking at our gym and library spaces being either resanded, refinished, or replaced. Exterior doors, exterior wood details that was mentioned at Manomet, similarly, in the gutters and the trim. I know that we're going to talk about technology refurbishing. Dr. Mestes just mentioned that a second ago. I think in addition to the computers that haven't talked about, we've also had the ability to have, which we have here to show these displays, overhead projectors that are in focus projectors, and they are coming at a cycle that they are starting to wind down. It's not just the bulb replacement, but actually the machines really need to be looked at. So everything, I think, that was mentioned earlier is on a cycle about replacement when we're talking about technology, and we had great support. We've been fortunate through a combination of situations to outfit probably 20-plus classrooms with this interactive technology outside of the cost to the district. So we're trying to be innovative, I think, but you still kind of run into this idea of replacement costs. It's not quite the replacing of the smartphones from people and doing it every two months kind of piece, but technology does change, and so we have to be on top of that. We also recognize, you know, I think the question's been asked a couple times, is, you know, what would we like to see? What isn't in our budget that we have here currently? And I do think that staffing piece around emotional supports, we've mentioned the relationship. We also have been in the second, two-year, now third year of this South Bay relationship. Our counselor sees over 25 students. We as well have been trying to see if there's an additional counselor that can support that South Bay relationship. So that would certainly be something that isn't within our budget. And I also think, I've mentioned this before, this idea of sensory tools or universal designs and the type of equipment that's needed to really address accommodations. It's an approach that we've been looking at over the last few years and really creating inclusionary environments. So a lot of, as I said, detail and work about how we build our budgets have come before, really well done, so I didn't have to get into much of that. But I think you see some similarities here at Nathaniel Morton that you've heard about in the prior five schools. But I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. South Elementary.
At South Elementary, we currently service, we expect it to service about 551 students in kindergarten through fourth grade. We are the only kindergarten-through-fourth-grade building in the district. We, like Cold Spring, we are a leader-in-me school, and we have been a leader-in-me school for two years. We have just under 30% of our students are free and reduced lunch, and about 16% of our students are serviced by special education. We have about 92 staff members, and we have 28 classrooms. And then we have a variety of different teachers that service. One of our, we do have a district-wide program of our Autism Spectrum Disorder Program, and we have about 11 staff members that are associated with that program. We, like several of the other schools, have an affiliation with South Bay, so we do have a counselor that is in our building a majority of the week. Over the past couple of years, South Elementary has had an ASD program added to our school. We are in its third year of operation at our school. We started three years ago with six students, and we currently have 17 students in the program. We started the program with K through second grade, and now we are K through four in that program. Some of the other pieces that we've seen is, we had preschool in our building, and they moved from South Elementary School to PCIS, as I'm sure that you are aware. One of the things that we have seen over the past couple of years is quite a bit of social-emotional concerns and really an increase in having to respond to classrooms to deal with some of those needs. Our building was also built in 1975, like several of the others. We did have an addition put on in 1999. We are going to need to look at a new roof soon as our roof is over 30 years old in the original building. Some of the needs that some of my other colleagues have mentioned as well that we need to look at in the upcoming years, our computers are aging. We would love to offer off-to-school programming for students. Makepeace, as you know, has just completed a field at our building, and it's invested tens and tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds. And one of the things that we really want to do is we want to make sure we protect that investment. So one of the things that's not included are cameras to kind of keep an eye on that investment. Also, we're looking at an intercom system that we would love to add, fix as well. We have a commercial-grade fan that we use to kind of keep it cool, and if it gets unplugged, our intercom system goes down. We were lucky enough, last year, our gymnasium floor was replaced because of a leak that we had in our gym. It did cause damage to it. It was one of those concerned areas, but it was replaced last year. And then another concern that we would have is looking for additional support for behavioral interventions and support for our students. Like my colleagues, again, we've received an outpouring of community support over the past years. Our PTA has raised approximately $20,000 a year to help run additional programs in school, cover field trips, buses. They just brought the aquarium in. Our playground is in need of about $11,000 worth of repairs, and they just obtained a $5,000 grant from Ocean Spray in order to help partially fund some of those repairs. Over the past couple of years, Captain John has funded over 50% of our field trips that one of our grade levels goes on. Makepeace has contributed thousands of dollars for our leader-in-me process, along with Entergy and the Plymouth Education Foundation. Additional groups, like the others have said, Shaw's, Lion Clubs, and Smart Pack have contributed food, monies for food to support our students, and backpacks for our students. And as I said, Makepeace has contributed a field, and if you have a chance to go see it, it's absolutely gorgeous. Any changes that you've seen to our budget? Really, again, we looked at a level service budget. There is a decrease in our general supply line because we had budgeted for a copier in FY17, so in FY18, we do not need to purchase another one. So that's about a $6,000 decrease that you'll see. All of our other supply lines are a decrease just due to enrollment, expected enrollment. You'll see a large decrease in our medical supplies. We were actually one of the highest in the district for medical supplies, but this year we did institute a per-pupil expenditure across the board for elementary, so you'll see a decrease because that just matches with the other buildings. And then all other increases you'll see are due to salary requirements.
Any questions? Okay, final one. West.
Good evening. Scott Williams, West Elementary Principal, Koster Center 314, and I'm the closer this evening. So West Elementary School, again, as my colleagues have already mentioned, we are offering a same-level service budget. Any increases you can see can be attributed to the contractual salary mandates. Quick snapshot of the makeup of West, we have 390 students, grades K to five, 19 general education classrooms. We have four full-day kindergartens. We are hosting Hedge Elementary School for the academic year this year. We have three sections of grades one to five. We do host two district programs at our school. One is the Life Skills Program and the Care Special Education Program. Life Skills has two classrooms, Care has three. We have three moderate special needs, special education classrooms. We offer art, music, phys ed, library, and computers. We have an occupational therapy teacher, a nurse, computer lab instructor, a school psychologist, physical therapist. We do have one adjustment counselor dedicated to the Care program. Total paras, full-time and part-time, are 23. These include student activity monitors, Care, Life Skills, moderate special needs, literacy and library, two cafeteria employees, a head custodian, two night custodians, a full-time assistant principal, one full-time office secretary, and two part-time security desk receptionists. That's a very high-level snapshot of the makeup of West in terms of staffing. Transitional changes for this fall? No changes to West other than the induction of the full-day K program, as we all experienced this fall across the district. West Elementary was built in 1975. It is 41 years old. We have 36.2% amount of free and reduced lunch students. We also do have Title I assistance at West Elementary. We benefit immensely from the South Bay Mental Health Program. That is a no-cost program to the district, as my colleagues have mentioned. We are fully engaged in that program at West Elementary School, especially with our programs. It really does assist our students in need. We have relied on the help and assistance of PTA at West. I have to give a shout-out and kudos to our partners in education. The West Elementary PTA has been strong in terms of funding programs at West. We cannot provide the level of enrichment programs that we do offer our students without their support. Tens of thousands of dollars across my three-year tenure at West. Field trips have been funded, busing costs and admittance fees to all programs, field day supplies and T-shirts. PTA runs and organizes and funds our field day every year. Books from our Scholastic Book Fair for our teacher-classroom libraries. Nature's Classroom was an endeavor that we started last spring, and through the help of our PTA funding, we've been able to have excavation supplies, mulch, a learning shed, plant, soil, and shrubs. This is a real great, hands-on, valuable experience for our kids. Student Council has also raised money. I know one of my colleagues mentioned this earlier. We had a water balloon toss, and that raised $700 for Nature's Classroom last spring. We've also had many employees pursue grants. They take this on at their own time through their own needs. We are currently pursuing a grant for Nature's Classroom for $2,000. And recently, Emma Quinn was just awarded, from a financial institution, a $500 grant for hearing equipment for our Life Skills students. So there are many venues and many ways that we try to pursue financial assistance beyond the budget. Playground equipment, play structures, playground balls, et cetera, that is always something in need through our PTA. Theatrical equipment, speakers, acoustic equipment for our plays. Improvement of the West basketball courts was a recent donation we received from the Wahlberg Foundation. I believe that was $20,000. So again, another example of beyond the budget helping to assist our students at West, and a recent donation from the Lions Club for $500. In terms of future needs at West, I do see an expansion of the parking lot being something that will be necessary. Currently, if you attend a West event on the weekends, it can be a safety danger issue. People are parking on the grass and on hills and grassy knolls, so that is something that I can see being an expenditure in the future for West Elementary School. I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions for West? Oh, we got a few.
I was just wondering, you said that you were housing, you know, one classroom of Hedge students for this year. Where are they next year?
I believe they're returning back to Hedge, as Principal Wilson mentioned, I think.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Dr. Sorenson?
My question is not for Mr. Williams, but a sort of a summary question. Two of the eight of you, two federal friends of Manomet had a tuition conference line item in your budget, and only two schools have that. So I'm sort of curious as to why is it, why it is only two schools that have that? And maybe, I could be reading it, 045.
That's the same.
It's object 045?
Yeah.
Called Tuition Conference and Travel?
Right, it's the same one as the mileage, the contractual mileage.
Only two schools have that. That's what surprises me. Am I reading that correctly? Because I didn't see it in anybody else's budget.
It's my, I just might have it in a line item.
Okay.
Yeah, whenever you submit for mileage reimbursement, it comes out of that account. And then the membership's also the ASCD.
Through you, Mr. Bagley. What we can do, Dr. Sorenson, is get some clarity on where those are located in virtual budgets.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bagley, if I could follow up with the elementary presentations, it's something relative to the rest of the presentations tonight.
Sure.
Just for everyone's knowledge, I know, everyone knows that Plymouth South High School will be decommissioned this summer. What we are doing with the high school principal, vocational principal, and our staff are doing a significant inventory of equipment in that building that can be reused and reallocated. So what we're doing is we're putting together a list, and we're going to actually reallocate what can be used on those schools, because some of the building, the new building facility will actually have equipment as part of the construction project. So if there are reusable equipment pieces, some of the things that were mentioned tonight, what we're going to be able to do is really try to add some level of equity with some of the pieces that we do have left at South, keeping in mind that we're going from desks that are this high to desks that are that high. So we do have to take some adjustment and take a look at those things, but we will take a strong, responsible look about how we can refurbish and reintroduce some of those equipment pieces into the buildings across the district, not just, and we really want to take a look at equity and make sure that schools that have, don't get more of what they already have, and schools that don't have, have some level of equity across the board. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell, you want to close out?
Sure. Be the closer for the elementary. Sorry. Koster Center 319, district-wide elementary, can be found on page 70. These are... These are opportunities and programs that aren't specific to any particular building, but are district-wide, such as our elementary math coaches and the professional development support that's done through those folks. Our instrumental music program, which is very strong across all of our schools, as well as our extended learning opportunities, particularly our elementary robotics and our robotics rally, and also some literacy paraprofessional support. So the overwhelming majority of that budget is personnel, and you can see that it's up about 6.3% overall. So while it's very basic, you'll see it's a level service budget. The only increases were to those salary lines. Just to reference that, we also have literacy coaches, but those are not funded through the operational budget. Those are funded through a grant, since we've been talking about grants, the Title II-A grant, which is a teacher quality grant. We have two literacy coaches that are supported through grants as well, and that grant is close to $244,000. Happy to answer any questions regarding this budget.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, so, any questions for elementary as a group? Mr. Merrill?
In terms of the grants, I'm hearing a lot of the South Bay Mental Health Program. When that grant runs out, does the school anticipate allocating a further budgetary to hire future council staff psychologists to the elementary?
Yeah. Do I speak to it? Yeah? Go ahead. One of the benefits of working with this model is, we actually did a pilot with them a couple of years ago, which was grant-funded, and it was a, the grant was really covering the facilitation of a model of having reimbursable services. So when the organization comes in, they actually get reimbursed from the insurance provider of the individual. So there's a constant funding source, so that funding source, as far as we can see today, we see that that will continue to move forward in the model that we've presented. It does seem to be working well, and it does seem to be providing a level of resource that appears to be dependable. So I think what we tried to do with the pilot was roll it out, see how well it works. But I think after, you know, being in it for three years now, we really see that there's great value, and the organization has really kind of figured out the model, and I think we've found a way to make it work in the district. So to answer your question, based on the funding model that has been designed around reimbursable services, those clinicians are able to come into schools, and there's a funding mechanism that is either through state health organizations or through independent insurance that actually cover those costs to those individuals. So that's pretty much how it operates.
So when you say independent health insurance, that's coming through the students?
Yes.
Provided insurance?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. So now, while we're switching to middle school, let's take a five-minute break. Now we have the middle school. Who wants to go first? Let's see.
I'll go.
PCIS.
First. We'll go by the order. We'll start there. All right, well, thank you guys for having us today. We are Cost Center 321. We're presenting a level service budget. This level service budget was done in collaboration with coordinators and directors. This budget was also reviewed by our school council on November 17. We have a school, our population is going up. This year, we were at 998. We were projected for 976, so we increased by about 20 students, but we're going up to 1,032 next year. We do have some district-wide programs in our school. We have the Basic Skills, which is a special education program, and we also have the CARE program, which is for emotionally impaired students. We also are an ELL school, so we have approximately 34 students, although we had some enrollments this week to increase that size. But we're about 34 students strong in our ELL population. We also have 15 students that have the primary diagnosis of autism. That is large enough to have a program, but it does not have a program. Those are supported with our moderate special needs teachers with their caseload. Our free and reduced lunch population is about 34%. And you'll see in this budget that there are some slight increases, and that's based on our increased enrollment. You'll see, you will see a decreased enrollment in our special ed line items, and that's because we do see a decrease in our special ed population. Our total budget for our supplies, and the supplies, again, when you're looking at the departments, what's what they need to run their departments at a level service, and then, you know, looking at the phys ed department, what equipment do they need to really provide that same level of service in those programs? And then just the general supplies that our teachers use, paper, pencils, rulers, all those things. So those, that total increase for the whole budget is about 2.88%. 97% of our budget is salaries. Like my colleagues at the elementary school, our PTA does amazing things with very little. They are able to provide cultural enrichment programs for our students, guest speakers. We've been fortunate enough over the past few years to have some guest speakers come into our school to speak to our students. I know some of you have attended those. Field days, the Olympics, honors breakfast, we just had an honors breakfast today, and our PTA does support all those wonderful programs that brings not only things to our students, but also brings families into our school to enjoy some of the programs we have here. Student of the Month, those type of things, but I will say, we also do have some grants, like you had heard from our colleagues at the elementary school. We are working with Project Purple, that's a Chris Heron grant with the Beth Israel. We have a counselor that comes and meets with our students after school for students who have, families have suffered from addiction, and they meet weekly in the school. So they come here and they support each other in that program. We also have that South Bay grant that you heard from. Our council is booked solid, and we're actually looking too for an additional counselor to come in and help support the students here at PCIS. Our school is 44 years old. We have been very fortunate with the support of the school committee and the town. We've had many upgrades, and you're seeing it here, just in the little theater, but last year, we were able to get tile flooring and some new lockers, and that's been great. We also have some other needs that we'd like to see at some point. We have our fields out back that are used not only for our phys ed classes up until November, but then they go back out. They try to get outside as much as possible, and our field's in some desperate need of repair. One of the issues we have with our fields is that there's no fence around the field, and in the, in the nice weather, we have motorcycles that are out there, because you can get there directly from the state forest. In the winter, we have snowmobiles, and it does a number on the fields. And again, we have our students using that throughout the year, and we'd like to at least get a way to put a fence around it to kind of keep those people off, so we can refurbish those fields. One of the things, again, I mentioned, we were fortunate enough to get tile flooring and new lockers, but the school was not completely done. We still have some sections of the building that still have the rugs and the older lockers. And one of the things that was mentioned to me at the beginning of the year, one of our programs is down in the IMC, and they still have the rugs, and it's the special ed care program, and the kids were wondering why they didn't get new lockers and new rugs. And, you know, I agreed with them. I said, we should be doing something for you. The rest of the school has nice lockers and nice floors, so that's something we'd like to provide for them at some point. And then, we've mentioned our PA, some PA systems at the elementary school. Our PA system is in some need. We've had occasions where the PA has not worked in certain classrooms, and they have to watch the hallways to see when there is dismissal, and if they're deep in thought, we've had students come out late, and then we've actually had a classroom miss their bus because the teacher didn't hear the PA. So some of those, some of the needs that we have in the building, but I will say, we're very fortunate here of the upgrades that we've been able to have here at PCIS. Some other needs, we have a French program here at PCIS without textbooks, so we would like to provide some textbooks for them, for their classes, just a class set, so the teacher can refer to those materials. Also, we have a .5 school psychologist. You heard many of the principals from the elementary school talk about the social-emotional support that students need. We have a need for more support for those students, and right now, we have a .5 school psychologist, and we'd like to increase that to a 1.0 to help our current school psychologist who does counseling, does the 504s, does some CST, and also attends meetings, and some of those meetings take her out of the support services for part of the day. One of the things we're looking at too, because I mentioned that we have an increased enrollment for next year, we have 54 more 6th grade students coming into PCIS next year, so we're going to be looking at not only how we're going to support those kids in the classroom with staffing, but also with space. As you know, that the preschool has moved in, they're a wonderful addition to PCIS. We've done some outstanding collaboration between the middle school and the preschool, but we do need to find some space for the increase in projected enrollment for our 6th grade. So again, overall, our increase in supplies of all of our departments is about 2.88%. And that's, we, that's all I have for you guys, so if you have any questions or anything I can add.
Any questions? Mr. Merrill?
Yes, do you have any technology needs for the next year's budget?
We're very fortunate. We have, I believe, 11 chrome carts that we were able to purchase through Park, and I would say those are utilized on a daily basis. So I would say right now, because that's what most of our students and teachers are using, we could always use more, but we're definitely sufficient in, you know, you're looking at, I think someone mentioned, projectors and things like that. The wear and tear on some of those items, I think, can, could change, but right now, you know, I think because of the increased chrome carts, we're pretty good.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? In South Middle?
Good evening. I'm Steve Morgan. Welcome, the principal of Plymouth South Middle School, excuse me. It is Cost Center 322. PSMS currently serves 838 students in grades 5 through 8. 20% of our students are considered students with disabilities, and 60% of our students qualify currently as economically disadvantaged. Within our building, we have, again, grades 5 through 8. We also house a Life Skills Program classroom and two ASD classrooms for middle-level learners. We have a faculty that includes 67 teachers, 10 certificated support specialists, and three administrators. We also have 49 members of our support staff, including clerical, custodial, and kitchen staff members. We are now in our 17th year of operation at Plymouth South Middle School. The building continues to be in good working condition. The school grounds are in a transitional phase, however, due to the construction project at South High School. We are currently in the process of rerouting our irrigation system to our athletic fields, and the turf will need to be repaired in the next one to two years as well. We've gone from having about four or five different athletic fields that we could play on down to one, and so it's taking a bit of abuse from constant use and housing all, or being used by all those teams. In an effort to maintain the same level of service budget, those costs have not been included in this budget. We have mentioned a lot of different partnerships with community members, and in addition to, you know, local businesses like Kohl's and Savers and Big Lots, I know that both PCIS and PSMS both benefit from the South Bay Community Service Partnership, but we also have entered into relationships in the last year or two with Pilgrimage Collaborative and the Old Colony YMCA as well, providing additional opportunities for our students for leadership programs and academic skill development programs. So we're happy to have the support of our community partners. Our PTA at PSMS has done a wonderful job. They've already allocated $18,000 this year alone for programs and services for our students. We also have, we're very proud to be working with the Emily Schwartz, the family of Emily Schwartz. She's a former student who passed away while she was studying at Indian Brook Elementary School. Emily would have been an 8th grade student this year at PSMS, and her family has established a memorial fund in her honor, and the memorial fund has provided funding for programs for her classmates, or the students that would have been her classmates as they moved through the Plymouth Public Schools. So this Friday, actually, we're sending 250 8th grade students who would have been Emily's classmates to the Zitierian Theater to see a performance down there this Friday. So we're happy to have worked with them over the course of the last three years. There are a couple of items within the budget that I just wanted to point out some additional information about. We were using the detail budget, so I'm going to refer to the page numbers there, if that's okay. I'm not sure which budget you guys are on right now, but on the bottom of page 88, we have deducted $6,599. That money was, last year, that money was earmarked for student furniture that we no longer have to purchase. We were able to purchase that last year, so that line has been zeroed out. On the bottom, on the middle of page 88, there is a $3,000, $3,088 increase in line 5350004. That covers the second year of our three-year lease on new copiers. Subsequently, on the top of page 89, there's also a decrease in the service, in the contracted services line that was the line that funded the copier maintenance program that we had on our old machines, but the new lease program has the maintenance services built into that lease, so we don't have to pay for that anymore currently. There's also, at the bottom of page 94, there is an increase in contracted services. That's line 010050004. That increase of $3,500 is to more accurately reflect the cost of transporting our athletic teams to their, to their games and functions. Those are the, kind of the big ones that stick out, but if you have questions about any of the other items in the budget, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
High school. Oh, there was no entry on district-wide for that one. Dr. Maestas?
Correct.
There's no, there's a...
No district-wide medal.
There's nothing there, right?
No.
Good evening, Chairman Begley. School committee members, members of the finance committee and central office administration. Good evening. My name is Kathleen McSweeney, and I'm in my seventh year as principal of Plymouth North High School. I wish to thank you for this opportunity to present the 2017-18 budget for Plymouth North High School. Quite similarly to the excitement our colleagues are currently experiencing at South in anticipation of their new opening, it was five years ago that Plymouth North High School opened its door. The 2017-2018 school year will mark the sixth year that we are in our amazing school. We are extremely grateful to our Boosters Club and our community in-kind donations from places such as Shaw's, White Cliffs Country Club, Kohl's, Tarjay, and Entergy for their ongoing support of our school community. These generous organizations assist us in defraying the costs associated with field trips, supplies and materials, and the funds are donated to assist us in sustaining several of our programs. As my colleagues have shared with you previously this evening, the budget prepared is a level service budget. Our Cost Center may be found on page 51, with the Cost Center details beginning on page 98. Once again, Plymouth North High School's enrollment will increase next year, and this budget was formulated based on a projected enrollment of 1,340 students, 1,275 which are day students, and 65 which are alternative high school students. You will notice a few areas of increases for this, for this level service budget, specifically in the area of postage and technology software. We believe strongly in communication between home and school. It is critical to a student's educational journey. Students' grades are posted utilizing the software program Aspen. In addition, we also send home four times a year, letters to families communicating when, regrettably, a student is receiving grades of D or F midway through their term. In addition, we meal hole MCAS scores, central office communications, and that occasional emergency letter to inform families of happenings within our school. Two years ago, we added the technology gaming program Zulama. We will be entering the third year of this heavily enrolled and exciting program. The cost associated with the software for year three is in the budget. Likewise, our biomedical program enters its third year. This track... This track for our students has been extremely well-received. And our project lead, the way scores last year, were truly outstanding. This school year, we also added AP Computer Science to our curriculum. Software for the teaching of this course is in the budget. If not under the guidelines of a level service budget, both Mr. Hannah and I would probably be requesting the addition of a fifth vocational technical program at Plymouth North High School. The program we would like to add would be in the area of IT programming. Adding a fifth program would afford the opportunity for Plymouth North, like Plymouth South, to have an exploratory program. In addition to the three special education programs that we house at North, care for our social-emotional students, project growth, and life skills, I would also like to share with you that the diversity of our school and community continues to expand. This school year, thirty-two percent of our school community receives free or reduced lunch. In addition, our ELL program continues to expand, with the largest enrollment of my ten, seven-year tenure currently experienced their educational journey at North. In conclusion, I wish to thank you for the opportunity to present the PNS budget projections for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. And I would gladly answer any questions you may have at this time.
Anything for North?
Would you repeat, repeat for me the increase in enrollment we're projecting from what to what?
We were, we were at one thousand two hundred and forty-five last year. This year, we'll be at one thousand two hundred and seventy-five day school, with a total enrollment of one thousand three hundred and forty, if you included the alternative high school students.
You're welcome. And we built it for one thousand three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it's getting tight already.
You thinking what I'm buying?
That's good planning. North Vocational High?
We have a question.
A question over there. Oh, we had a question, Mr. Merrill.
Other than the noted needs for IT program, and then some software upgrades that are also included in the budget, what other needs that you, that you would need for the next fiscal year that included in this year's budget, or next year's budget?
Projection, projection-wise, we've been talking about our ELL program. And I think that's been consistent throughout the district. Our numbers continue to rise there. We have one teacher of ELL at North. And there's a diversity of the students in that program. We have some students that do not speak any English at all, through students that have advanced through the program who are quite articulate in the English language. Just today, we received two more students. The two students that enrolled today do not speak any English at all. So Ms. DeSilva, within her classroom, has quite an eclectic group. So I, we believe, as a district, that's an area that we have to, have to look at. And we've also talked, and I'm sure Mr. Hannah will speak about it as well. It would be great to have an exploratory program at North as well. And that would require us adding one more vocational program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Maestis?
If I could also contribute to that, I know Mr. McLean will, will address this a little bit later in his presentation. But I think this is almost a lesson learned with North, you know, going into South High School. We experienced it with South Middle, and we experienced, experienced it with PCIS years ago. Next year will be the sixth year of Plymouth North High School's, new high school's existence. Not only that, we'll, we'll notice six-year-old teacher laptops, which, you know, those of us that use technology quite frequently, laptops probably have a usable life of three to four years. I think it signifies the diligence and determination of our technology team to actually keep these machines up and running. But all the technology at Plymouth North High School is going to be six years old. So I think one of the concerns we have moving forward, and I think Mr. McLean will highlight that systemically is, I mean, we have, we're going to have to come up with a, a long-term strategic plan on how we refresh these. I think the problem that Principal McSweeney is going to run into with her, her staff is a lot of the computers we have now, the processors and the configurations are really not conducive to the, the latest updates that, that are being pushed down through the network. So I think that will be, I mean, it's really difficult when, when a lot of our schools are in the same position to really, how do you prioritize technology, because it is quite expensive. So that's one of the things that we're going to have to do, is try to manage that long-term plan.
Mr. Merrill?
Just a question in regards to technology. I'm, I'm sure all the school districts across the Commonwealth are probably facing similar issues like technology. As the schools look at maybe have a collaborative way of partnering with schools and purchasing software licenses and, and equipment as well?
We actually contribute and purchase through collaborative purchasing when a program exists to be able to maximize pricing. You know, I think one of the things that we have done recently, which is a huge benefit, but it, it's kind of a, you know, a sign of the times with technology. We've really adopted the model of using Chromebooks in our schools. They're, they're cost-effective. I mean, they're, they're under three hundred dollars a machine. The problem is they have a three-year lifespan, and we're really pushing that envelope with some of our machines that we see today. What's nice about it is, you know, the, the price is very attractive, and you can get a, a number of machines in classrooms. But they're dependent on the internet. And that forces another conversation about our adequacy of our bandwidth and network infrastructure to manage the flow of, of information across, you know, the, the schools. But they have, they really have a three-year lifespan, and it's really battery life that starts to fail. And, I mean, they're, they're really inexpensive. They've done a wonderful job for us, but we're going to have a lot of work to do to put a plan on the table, to look at how we can save every dollar that we possibly can to look at refreshing technology. It is going to be one of our major future issues that, that will be on the table. And we just see that happening.
Mr. Costin?
Thank you. We, we are also members of the Mass Higher Ed Consortium, which is a collaborative group purchasing organization that many colleges belong to, especially state universities. We also take advantage of state contracts, so we compare both contracts to see which, which has the benefit for pricing, whatever we're purchasing at that time. And we're able to purchase most of our hardware, if not all our hardware, off of state contractor, MHEC. The other thing with software is we're pretty much negotiating education pricing, which is given to all K to twelve districts, so that's somewhat fixed across, across the marketplace. We have very competitive pricing for a lot of our software programs.
Thank you. Good. North Vocational.
If it's okay with, with the committee, I'd like to report on both North and South Vocational at the same time. Some of it overlaps, so instead of repeating myself. So the, if I draw your attention to the summary pages, which for South Vocational would be on page sixty-four, on North Vocational on sixty-eight, are the summary pages. Our population continues to be extremely strong at both Plymouth North and Plymouth South of vocational technical education students. At Plymouth South, we're at five hundred and fifty. At Plymouth North, we're at three fifty-seven. Ideally, you'll notice that there are a couple spikes in this budget. Specifically, I'll draw your attention to Plymouth North on page sixty-eight, in which you'll see a spike in contracted services of about sixty-five hundred dollars. And that's simply because we moved line items out of supplies and materials. We moved that to contracted services, so that's just a transfer of funds. And we, and that's specifically to maintain the equipment that we have in this building as five years has certainly been wonderful to us, but it's starting to make sure that we have our service contracts in place to maintain the wonderful equipment that we have there. At Plymouth South High School, any major changes that you'll notice specifically were about a two thousand dollar increase in contracted services. And this is for student certifications in various areas, such as ASE in automotive industry, Adobe certification in graphic design, or CAD certification in our CAD program. You'll also see a spike in supplies and materials, because we're anxious to bring Zulama, which is currently being run as an elective over at Plymouth North, which is the gaming program. It's also continues with that as programming and three-D design. And this all is incorporated into a computer science elective career pathway that we're excited about, which on one side will run pathways for Java and computer science, leading up to computer science AP, and then on the other side will lead to gaming, three-D animation, and of course, advanced portfolio production in that area. So the software for CAD renewal, we also have listed in there with the supplies and materials. It's every three years, we renew our CAD license. So we're looking at about seventy-five hundred dollar increase with that, as well as the software. We did actually reduce some other funds to keep that number a little bit more manageable in some other areas. As we continue to move forward, any changes or movement will happen simply because we'll be moving to the new South High School. And we'll obviously have to provide for our new CTE programs, but we're specifically prepared to do that maintaining a level-funded budget. And any new programs were funded by the non, or the phasing out of a couple programs so that we'd have funds for that. In addition, as Kathleen mentioned, as we look into the future, an addition of a fifth CTE program at Plymouth North would be ideal to offer the exploratory program, in which students would explore all the different programs before they have to select, similar to what we do at Plymouth South. And of course, we'd also want to make sure that we maintain our current structure of staffing. And we're very pleased to what we have right now. We have a fantastic group. And in the future, obviously, we'd only expand if the funds were available for us to add more courses or, and/or sections in CTE. We have been able to provide ourselves with additional funding through the Carl Perkins Grant. It's an annual grant that we apply for each and every year with the state. We also have a revolving account that we rely on tremendous amounts of funds based on our revenue. And we also each year apply for the vocational equipment grant, sustained again by Governor Baker as part of the initiative at the State House. So at both schools, we're in very good shape right now. We're very pleased with what we have. We're very fortunate, and we are very excited about the opportunity to move into the new building. In the future, what do I see down the road? That's currently not in this budget, it's just going to have to be able to maintain the equipment that we're going to bring into the new building, which is extremely important. So we'll plan for that as those years build themselves out. And those new programs grow, we'll obviously prepare for that as well, but confident that we can do that within the constraints of these budget times.
Very good. Any questions for the vocational program? Yes? South?
Good evening, I'm Mark Frontashari. I'm the high school principal for Plymouth South. First of all, I'm going to start with this. I don't really, I don't have any building needs. Just so you know, there are no building needs for Plymouth South. Going to start there. We're all set. Everything's good there. Currently, we have a thousand eight students enrolled. The projection that we got for next year is a thousand twenty-six. And we think that projection is up, because if you've looked behind our building, there's a beautiful new building. And I think there's a lot of excitement in town, and what the town has done is a great thing for the kids in the community. We are twenty-six percent free and reduced lunch, and we have two district-wide special education programs itself. Just like the other principals, it's a collaborative effort with the budget. We have really no changes to the budget. Like I said, there are really no big needs for Plymouth South. I don't think that there's going to be any personnel issues. And the only personnel issue I'm dealing with is I'm dealing with Mr. Costin with a couple things with custodians. It's a very short presentation by me, because the, the town and the, the people in this community have, have given their kids a great thing. And if you haven't taken a drive by our new South, it's beautiful. As Mr., Dr. Maestis said, there is a plan to help out the other schools in their needs. I just made a deal with Hedge School. They're gonna, I'm going to upgrade their sound system in the gym from the thirties to the late eighties. So we're helping them out. I'm going to deliver that. I'm going to deliver that to them this Wednesday. I do look at South in a different way now, as I walk through the classes. I think I have a little bit of my father in me, you know, what, what can we save and make sure other schools can use? So there is a plan, and if you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, Mr. Costin's going to give us regional vote tech though.
Correct, thank you. As, as you probably all know, we are required to transport students and provide tuition for students who attend vocational programs that we do not offer. This primarily revolves around the agricultural schools. And we have a number of students going to the agricultural school. If you look at page seventy on, of the report, the summary projection by department and object, just point out a couple things. Number one is, in the two thousand seventeen original budget, we had seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars budgeted. That was for three students. We ended up having six students go. That's why the budget's been changed to one forty-one, two forty-four. Obviously, we had to look far and deep within our budget. We were lucky, we had some savings in our natural gas prices have come down, our new contract. We were able to save about twenty percent. So we had to increase that, that line item. So we have six students going this year at a cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars per student, plus transportation. As I said, we're required to pay those tuitions. We had one eleventh grader, and I'd budgeted for two ninth graders. We ended up having five ninth graders come in. So next year, I have moved the eleventh grader up to grade twelve. We've got five grade ten, and I'm anticipating two grade nines. Of course, that can all change, but that gives us a total of eight students at twenty thousand dollars apiece for, for next year.
Any questions on that one? Mr. Merrill?
In regards to the, out of district, does that go to, would the tuition go to that, that town or municipality? Or does it go to the state?
It's, it's a regional school.
Yeah.
And those funds go directly to the regional school. They bill us, and we pay usually on a quarterly basis.
Now, does the town, does the town of Plymouth accept any students out of district for any of our vocational programs? Not?
If I could, Mr. Begley?
Maestis?
Every year, the school committee has the opportunity to entertain an option for school choice. School choice would open the doors for other students to be able to attend the schools of Plymouth. So any one of the area schools could apply, a kid could apply to come to school here. The, the Plymouth Public Schools do not subscribe to that. And yearly, the school committee doesn't, in September, I believe, we have a vote to, to make that decision. And we do not accept students for tuition basis in the Plymouth Public Schools.
That's something that you would think about in the future to offset the cost for-
We have waiting lists. We have, among our own people, we have a waiting list. Mr. Hannah can confirm that, I think.
I think that the dilemma that we have is we have-
It's just a question, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, we have a waiting list now, so we wouldn't consider it. That's the reason why we vote not to have it every year, because we just don't have the room. We can't, we can't offer the program to all of our own students, never mind offer it to another town.
Okay, thank you.
Question for Mr. Costin. Does the one, a one forty-one, two forty-four include transportation, or is that just tuition?
That's just tuition.
That I thought. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Campbell, you're going to do visual and performing arts?
Yes, Mr. Cable, our coordinator of visual and performing arts, had a family situation and sends his regrets for not being here, and asked me not to recommend any budget cuts to his cost center. So I'll try to stay true to that. No, in all seriousness, cost center three forty-seven can be found on page one forty of your materials. This is all things district-wide in relation to visual and performing arts, music, visual arts, our performances, et cetera. The overall cost center is up point seven-six percent, or seventeen hundred, sixteen dollars, which is really a reflection of a level service budget. There's actually a decrease of twelve hundred dollars to the mileage section in anticipation of having one less staff member traveling next year due to the positions and where they are located. What else can I say about this very basic, again, level service budget? The only increase- The only increases you will see would be due to contractual increases in salaries reflected to the staff that are purposed in that budget. In terms of future needs, because you've heard that, Mr. Cable would say that we're very proud of our visual and performing arts program, it's been very well supported by not only the school committee, but the town meeting members as well, we're very happy and proud of the program. We currently use an elementary instrumental staff member to support a middle school needs, ideally, we would correct this, but it's working. It has an effect on the large group sizes for group lessons, but it is working nonetheless. The other area that Mr. Cable suggested for future needs is certainly not a need for next year, but our performing arts program has really flourished over the years, not only at the high school, but our middle schools and elementary programs as well, and with that success, has been a strong need from the community, students particularly around elective-based programs for classes within the performing arts. But again, those were, would be future needs, so I'm happy to answer any questions related to this cost center if you have them.
I'm sure I got that. Just clarify.
The theater production?
No, no, no. What is it that he's looking?
No, he just, like, forward thinking, like visionary thinking, that if you were to add classes at the secondary level, we don't offer courses, elective courses for students in the theater production realm. So that would be something that, you know, if the opportunity arise, that he would support.
He would support.
But it's not a necessary thing at this time.
Good. Any questions? All right, then we'll move on to technology. Good evening.
Thank you. Julia Colby, technology coordinator for the district, cost center three five two. The summary page is seventy-six, the detail page is one forty-five. So as you can see, I have no increase, and it's been like this for the last three years, no increase in supplies and materials, no increase in other expenses, minimal increase in the contractual services, and the contractual increases for the salary line. What I would like to say, though, is with our list of needs growing, as our existing technology grows older, as well as our lack of technology in some areas, over the last few years, what I've been doing is I've been looking at our contractual services, seeing how they're utilized, and I have been, each year I've been getting rid of some, so with my priorities, we can purchase other things. But I'm at that point where I can't get rid of much more, so we have to somehow come up with a way to some of the old technology that we have. The elementary curriculum, we'd love to enhance that with some of the STEM tools. I did do a training last year for the elementary tech integration specialists on writing a mask Q grant, and Nathaniel Morton's tech integration specialist, Carmella Hughes, did fill out the grant, and she was awarded three thousand dollars. So she got a lot of STEM equipment, and she's going to do a training for the rest of the elementary tech integration specialist, so it's going to be a pilot program this year, but it would be really, I'm really looking forward to, and it'd be a great opportunity to bring that into the rest of the elementary schools. If there's any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Merrill?
In terms of your technology staffing, do you feel that it's adequate?
Staffing?
Yes.
No, I love that we have all these tech integration specialists, but because of the increase in kindergarten, we could really use a point five at hedge school. Right now, we have an integration specialist sharing between federal furnace and hedge, and she doesn't have much time free to do the other duties that are required of her.
Thank you.
So Alan McLean's going to talk about our technology, and really, it's a problem that's really waiting to happen, the technology's very old, the equipment.
Good evening, Alan McLean, cost center three six two, technology center. I think you've heard my name mentioned once or twice tonight already.
Once.
What I'm presenting to you tonight is a level service budget, reflects a small percent increase, as Dr. Maestas mentioned earlier, that small increase is due to the renewal of our antivirus district license. We're given very strict directions to build a level service budget. Building a budget with no increase in the technology department is virtually impossible. In the past, some of you have probably heard me talk about my concern over the aging technology in the district. I'd like to take a moment to direct you to the slide up on the screen, which reflects the aging technology. I'd like to highlight a few things on that screen, a few, basically, this chart reflects the desktops, notebooks, laptops, iPads, and Chromebooks in the district, it does not take into consideration the printers and projectors, you heard mentioned earlier. Both those items are well over four hundred items throughout the district. So the items, the percentage in red reflects the number of computers that are over five years in the district, and the forty-seven percent less than five years. Last significant purchase of technology is currently entering year five, and that was with North High School's project. Let's see.
Six years.
Yeah, six years. The problem we're coming across with a lot of this technology at this point is the processor, the memory, we're having issues running the latest operating system, as well as supporting the latest applications, which a lot of the newer curriculum, such as gaming, is driving. Some of the big numbers, we're looking at, if you look at year six on the desktops, seventeen hundred and fifty-five computers. Year nine, seven hundred and fifty-five computers. The seven hundred and fifty-five computers alone to replace all those would reflect about a four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar price tag. If I move down to the bottom of that chart, you'll see Chromebooks, we purchased nine hundred and sixty-five Chromebooks, that'll be out a year out, one thousand fourteen Chromebooks, two years out. Those were purchased with online testing in mind. As Mr. Palladino mentioned, they are being utilized within the schools, they were not meant as a replacement for desktops and notebooks, but more or less, they nicely complement the existing notebooks and desktops. And that's pretty much as bad as it gets.
In addition to that, we have projectors at the middle schools and elementary schools that, last year, I used some of that funding that, you know, that where I got rid of some of the subscription services, and we got projectors for all of the teachers, we, you know, there were some teachers that didn't have projectors at the middle school levels. But now this year, we don't have a replacement budget for them, and now they're starting to die, so, and that's at the elementary also.
Maybe one more final thing to point out, the Chromebooks that are in year two right now, will be year three next year. At one thousand fourteen, price tag to replace those are about two hundred thousand. The life expectancy, as Dr. Maestas mentioned, is three years, so. Questions?
If I could just add on to that, I think one of the dilemmas that we have is in Massachusetts, we did have the opportunity to enter into a two-year park assessment model, which we did the online assessment piece, which really helped us to get going with Chrome technology, which really worked well with online testing. The dilemma that every school district in Massachusetts is going to face is Massachusetts is entering into an online learning, online testing model, which every district in the state will have to grapple with these issues. So I think not only, like I mentioned before, does our district have to, you know, grapple with technology upgrades, but, you know, these devices are dependent on the internet and dependent on bandwidth and traffic, so I think we will be kind of figuring out how we meet those demands, and the more devices that are pointing to the internet to grab information, the more robust our network needs to be. Keep in mind that some of the switches that we have in our, in our, in our schools, even to do an upgrade on some of those software patches or firmware pieces, they're just beyond the life of upgrade, so they do, there is really a lot of planning that we have to take into consideration when we look at technology for the future. Not only do we have to deal with the issues of trying to replace some of this stuff, but it is a systemic network structure that we have to make sure it's going to fit the needs of our future.
Good. Any other questions? Mr. Merrill?
In terms of funding mechanisms, have you had a discussion with the town side on any monies that are left over from the budget and establishing an investment vehicle fund, where that would be invested in money market fund, equity fund, bond fund? That way, you're building equity into something where, when you have a future capital need, you can draw from that investment account, such for technology needs.
If you're willing to lead the charge, I will follow.
I gladly would leave that charge.
I think that the, we're going to have to think of a model that'll help us to build in a sustainable line item for technology, because we cannot do this all at once.
Right.
So it really has to be, you know, a long-term cyclical process, that a line item is established, and we can continue to attack, and, you know, over a five, six, seven, eight-year cycle, we would actually not get to the point where we have nine, eight, nine-year-old machines, and I think that's a dilemma, we don't have that cyclical process, and I know, within the next budget, I think you're going to hear about, you know, ten years ago, we put together a curriculum adoption cycle, which has that same dilemma, that when you have budgets that, or budget seasons, that you cannot increase budgets, those just don't come back, and you skip years of purchasing, which puts you years beyond where you need to be. So if there is a mechanism to do that, and if there's a strategy to sit down and talk about how that may be a way to fund technology, I know the school committee would definitely be interested in.
A heartbeat.
In sitting down and see how that would work, I mean, but it is a dilemma for us. And, I mean, Chris, you've been at the table every year, you hear the same thing, it's, except when Alan showed this to us last week, I said, you got to show this, because it's glaring, and it is a void.
And that's, we've become so technology-dependent these days. I think that we'd have to think outside the box now on finding funding mechanisms for this.
Absolutely.
So that's why, you know, maybe that idea implies.
And I give a lot of credit to Mr. McLean and Julia and Gary Costin for exercising federal dollars on E-rate and look at reimbursement for technology where it qualifies, so we do maximize those built-in infrastructural, you know, conditions that we can get government dollars, but, I mean, they are very strict on refurbishment and replacement of equipment, they're just not going to put desktop machines on tables, they're just not going to do it. And it's all about infrastructure, but they're looking at making sure we have stable systems, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Next, we have the coordinators.
Yes. Dr. Kathabini actually manages the budget for the district-wide coordinator services, and she's here tonight to present.
Thank you. The coordinator's office is three fifty-four, and it's on page eighty. Our office covers four academic coordinators, we have two secretaries, and our budget, as you can see, has an increase of one point seven eight percent. It reflects the increases of contracted service, oh, the increase for the contracts. There is, it's a level service budget, there's been no increases over last year. It covers office supplies, the copy machine, professional development, mileage, traveling within the district. What we do have, as Dr. Maestas just mentioned, when we looked at our last major purchases, I went back and pulled out, having the historical memory of this office since the last century. Mrs. Backman made a, I remember her creating it in conference room A, and she did a textbook revision rollout, and it started in two thousand and seven, FY oh seven, and she did it up till FY eighteen, and the budget was funded until FY oh eight. And it was at that point when we had the last major textbook purchase of everyday math. Since then, we've been able to purchase through our budgets, through some other areas, but in order to sustain it, we really need, in thinking down the line, to have that put back in, to have that as a line that is funded. When we look at our curriculums, Mrs. Reardon's in the process of rolling out the second, the new math, science standards, the second generation science standards, so there's going to be changes needed there for materials. The elementary materials were from, are, currently are from two thousand and six. The middle school materials in science are for two thousand and two to two thousand and nine. In my department, for US history textbooks, it, we get very excited when we, well, at least for AP, we're adding AP, an AP textbook in US history is a hundred and thirty dollars. New science AP textbook's a hundred and eighty dollars, AP psychology textbook's a hundred and forty dollars. So when you think in terms of, it's great, we're getting students involved and getting more and more kids taking AP, but every time we do, you start thinking about how many more books, that's a whole other section, and a hundred and forty dollars a book, there's a lot of money there. We've been putting in new electives in all of our departments, and those electives aren't supported by textbooks, we're trying to get teachers using online resources. Our current geometry book is from two thousand and one to two thousand and four, that's pre Common Core, that is the tested area for grade ten. A quoted bundle that Dr. Patinas just received was for twenty, over sixty-two thousand dollars to replace geometry books. So we're doing the best we can, we're looking at other things, but that, the biggest need that we see that we have would be for getting that textbook budget on that revision cycle back on track, so that that is a funded area, so that we now know that my department can look two years down the road to replacing textbooks, and we can look at both online and hard copy books, or at least a class of textbooks. We also are very fortunate to also be supported by the community. We have, last week, some of you were able to attend the reflections anthology that was presented by Dr. White and Mr. Cable, and that was supported by the, again, by the Emily Swartz Fund you heard about earlier. The Education Foundation of Plymouth was the biggest supporter of kids voting this year, funding our program along with the donation from the League of Women Voters and Manamet PTO. Science programming has also been supported by the Ed Foundation, as well as the biomedical community. So like the schools, we too reach out to community agencies and community groups, and have been very supportive in a lot of our programs that we tried to fund as well. We have things like, you know, my Model UN program that goes to New York, very successful, wonderful program for kids, but programs that we are always constantly seeking grants and funding to try and do. So that's our concern and our focus, so we have a one point seven six increase for next year.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next group we have is special education and pupil services. And we have Plymouth Early Childhood Center going first.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mary Mello, preschool director, I'm cost, cost center three oh one, page one. Before I begin with my budget, I have to thank the school committee and people in the town and the central office for all of their support that they provided in the past year for, you know, our preschool students in facilitating the move to PCIS. It's a beautiful, spacious site, with huge windows, lots of natural light, a new HVAC system, and all the room that we could ask for. You know, we're very, very happy there, so I want to thank all of you for your support. The preschool, at the current time, we're servicing a hundred and eighty-eight students, a hundred and sixty are in programs, and the other twenty-eight come to the preschool as outreach students for occupational therapy or speech therapy. I typically, you know, we add another thirty-five to forty students over the school year, so this year, I project that will end somewhere around two twenty for an enrollment. The biggest need that I can see is we're having so many students with behavioral and self-regulation issues. You know, you have the opioid epidemic, well, these young people with all of their risky behaviors. Well, these young people with all of their risky behaviors end up having children who are exposed to so many different drugs in utero and which really creates havoc on their nervous system. As preschoolers, they have so much difficulty just socializing, their language skills are delayed, many cognitive delays. I think if any point in the future, you know, money for additional staff would be available is, we need a psychologist at the preschool level to help parents deal with these behaviors, to help teachers, you know, understand some of the trauma and the medical implications that go along with, you know, these neurological conditions. We have an amazing staff that gets together and does a case review when we have a, you know, a child with, you know, a complex profile and they help each other and give each other, you know, suggestions. But to have someone from the, you know, mental health field, you know, on staff would really be helpful for us. Let's see. Some of our networks and connections that we have, being at PCS has given us so many opportunities. We're having a field trip to the music department for a, you know, Christmas concert this year. We have another field trip, we're going to walk to the planetarium. And being a little bit farther away from town, we couldn't walk to the fire station, so the fire station came to us. We have a canine group coming to us because a number of years ago, our PTA decided to move from a fundraising organization to, their mission is to just provide activities for young children and their families. So I think it cost us $46 to buy juice boxes and cookies and a Frosty the Snowman movie. And so we had 25 families that came to school Friday night in their pajamas, you know, played games, had cookies and watched two Frosty the Snowman movies. And the families got to meet each other, you know, the kids are making friends and so many young families, you know, tend to feel isolated these days, so it was a wonderful night to get to meet, you know, the parents of other, you know, young children in town. We have another, a couple of other networks that are really helpful to our program. This year, now that we have, are in the same building again with the Plymouth Family Network, we've combined so many of our programs and some services that we were duplicating in the past. And just today, I had a team meeting and a parent had a number of concerns and just asking for help. Well, it was so simple, just to refer her over to Tricia at the Family Network and they have, they had two of the workshops of some of the concerns that the parent had asked for. She signed up, you know, there we go, problem solved. We're sharing our nurse with PFN and our nurse is doing first aid and choking workshops for PFN. And now that we have the space at PCIS, our nurse can really be a health educator. She's going to be running CPR and first aid, you know, programs for the parents at Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Parents can just come to school, drop their kids off for a preschool program and then go to the conference room where the nurse will be offering some workshops. We also have a wonderful relationship with Head Start. It happened out of necessity and we were complimented at a state, state meeting a couple of months ago. With the overcrowding at Mount Pleasant, we realized that we were busing 14 children a day from Head Start to Mount Pleasant, you know, which was another transition for the children and we needed the space at Mount Pleasant, so we started servicing children at Head Start. So we send a teacher and a speech therapist there two mornings a week. Well, that relationship has blossomed. They have social workers that go to the home, so their social workers, you know, network with us, helping the families out. They have interpreters on staff who have connected with the families, so they're able to sit in at our team meetings. The parents trust them, so they help, you know, translate all of the reports, our special ed reports and IEPs, which saves just an awful lot of, you know, difficulties for the district, you know? And also, Head Start has so many social services for, you know, our families in need that, you know, we've referred quite a few families to Head Start and then we share the children with Head Start. It's been a great collaborative, you know, relationship, you know, which has benefited the district greatly. The only other change that you will see in my budget is that you will see a decrease in the supply line because in the past, when we had preschool students at the elementary schools, they received the per pupil supply amount, you know, per preschool student. Now that we have a centralized location, we're able to share supplies because my program is funded through local funds. I write a federal grant, a state grant, and then we collect tuition from the preschool peer models, which pays for most of the supplies. And we were able to shift that money out of the local budget into the preschool revolving account. And every year, I've been able to, you know, find a couple of grants, state grants, so I've been able to buy, you know, a couple of new computers for the teachers for data collection and I can use that money also for specialized equipment. Last year, we bought seven iPads because we have a number of students who are non-verbal and need an augmentative communication device. So this has been able to be purchased through, you know, grants, different state grants. Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Alternative High School.
All right. Good evening. My name's Josh Appen tear. I'm the Director of Alternative Programs, cost center 335. The summary is on page 69 and the detail page is on page 137. Under the budget process, we put together a level of service budget, which only includes percentage increases due to staffing contractual obligations, and that would be for three full-time staff members. And at last count, we had 15 part-time staff members with 81 students. I think it's, you know, the student population of the alternative program is a year-to-year. We never know exactly what's going to be coming to the alternative program. 100% of the alternative program is at high risk of not meeting the next educational milestone. I think that's important to note in all of the, you know, services that go along with that type of student population. We do do some community networking to try and raise some additional funds to provide the services that we provide. Some of that funding comes from the Chamber of Commerce, AD Makepeace, Have a Sammy kind of day. We've wrote some state grants and we've partnered with the Heron Project and VID Plymouth to provide some additional counseling, much like the South Bay schools have noted. I think we've heard a lot about the increased needs of the student population throughout elementary, middle and high school, you know, when they, the end of the road is the alternative program, so we try to get those services in place with the alternative program as well. So I think as far as future need goes, obviously, we'd go without saying that more full-time staff would be the most benefited aspect to the full-time program. Other than that, it's a level service budget, same as it is this year.
Any questions for this one? People's Services.
Good evening.
Support Services.
Yeah. It's on.
My name's Sean Halpin and I'm the Student Support Services. That is our center 348 and the summary of town information is on page 72 and the detailed lines are on page 142. So Student Support Services comprises different departments within the general ed support services of the public schools. That includes the school counseling services, English language learner education, McKinney-Vento homeless education services and transportation, the district-wide supervisor of attendance, general education tutoring services. Oh, thanks. Homeschooling and high school MCAS tutoring. I just want to point out that some of the programs and services that are provided through Student Support Services tend to be mandates by law that don't always have direct reimbursement. And you'll get the sense of that as I go through quickly some of the highlights of the budget that I'd like you to hear. So you will notice that the overall FY '18 budget is an increase of 5.72% and that does represent a level service budget with the best projections we can make within the constraints that we have. So as far as salary positions go, we have seven and a half full-time salaried personnel in Student Support Services. That represents 54% of the overall budget. It includes five certified ESL teachers, the attendant supervisor. We have a .5 secretary that we share with Educational Technology, who has the other .5 of that position, the director. And then there's budgeted money for home and hospital tutoring for students as well in that line. I want to point out that one of the areas in the budget that is larger is the homeless education transportation service line, which is 412,000. And I'll just spend a moment to explain that a little bit to you. We had an opportunity last year to decrease spending in that line, which we were very happy to do, but there was a provision that the state provided for foster care children that put a limit on the number of days that a student could be considered homeless under that particular area of homelessness, foster care. That has all changed now with the Every Student Succeeds Act. This is the federal law that has replaced No Child Left Behind. And just by way of summarizing how that's going to change, we're, the law is going to provide much more protection and provision for students who are homeless or are in foster care. And the length of transportation services is going to be extended now through the end of the school year, basically even if students do receive permanent housing during the school year. That's a significant change for us. Just want you folks to be aware of that. We're trying to plan ahead the best we can with that. The good thing is that the way we were able to kind of cut funding and budgets a little bit last year has overflowed into this year because of some of the patterns that we had developed in our practice. So the costs right now seem to be down a bit. I'm concerned that moving forward, particularly FY '18, we're just going to be required to be spending more money on the transportation aspects for this particular part of the budget. So, and the duration of homelessness is what we're going to be looking at and foster care, which will probably increase the line. Another line that I'd just like to be aware of is we do have a college board account that provides testing for our students in high school, PSAT testing for students grades nine through 11, as well as SAT school day for seniors. There's a small line for ELL techs and instructional supplies and a small line for supplies for the Student Support Services. Finally, the increase, the 5.72 increase that you see is mostly contractual salary obligations. However, we did have to increase a couple of lines as well. The ELL student transportation line, which last year was 12,000, has now been increased to 35,000. And this means that when students come to our district and they're not districted for a school that has ELL services, we're required to provide those services and then transport them to that school. So right now, we have four students who are in that boat, basically. Two go to Hedge, one go to Nathaniel Morton, one goes to Cold Spring. That's about $6,300 annually, so we did have to increase that line a bit. And that's somewhat unpredictable from year to year to try to get a handle on how many students might be moving in with that need. Also, there's a line that we have for tuition for Massachusetts recovery schools. We have that at 30,000 now, which is 150% increase from where it was, and that's representative of three students who are attending recovery schools in Massachusetts, of which there are two and they're Plymouth students. That's another line that is somewhat unpredictable for us to be able to know what it's going to look like each year. So just by way of summary, I would say that the unpredictably, excuse me, unpredictability of the lines that include homeless transportation, ELL transportation, general ed tutoring and tuition for recovery schools, probably the most challenging part of the budget. The increase in homelessness in general and foster care impacts this line as well. And then finally, I just say that the legal mandates, as well as the social emotional needs of our students, have increased greatly. And this impacts the schools and in particularly, it impacts my department and probably the departments that are sitting here at the table with me. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just one, if I could.
Dr. Myastis?
How many students do we have in the district that are categorized as homeless?
Yeah, I pulled the numbers Friday and we have currently 58 students in district, 33 additional students that we share transportation costs, they're homeless or housed in Plymouth but attend a school outside of Plymouth. It's their school of origin. That's a total of 91. We spent probably $27,000, $28,000 so far this year on transportation. The transportation, that's low for this time of year. It is, and many of these students were very fortunate, were able to use existing routes. We were as creative as we can to make sure they get to school, but that's the way the numbers look now. And we've averaged over the past three years about 100 in district students that are considered homeless and roughly 50 to 60 that we share costs with, those are the three-year averages.
Okay. No questions? Special education?
I'm Stacy Rogers. I'm the Director of Special Education. I'm cost center 353. Currently, we service over 1,500 students on special education plans and approximately 350 students on 504s and those are all students with diagnosed disabilities that have been Again, I've prepared a level service budget. My increase is 3.68% and that's mostly reflective of contracted service, which reflects out-of-district tuitions for students that are placed outside of the town of Plymouth. Our transportation costs, which again, some of that is in district costs, but some of that is also out-of-district costs. The cost of salaries, my budget houses our related service providers, so occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision therapists, behavior therapists, two elementary department And that's pretty much all of my increases. You'll hear, you've heard a lot today about some of our partnerships, which I think is reflective of where our students are at right now with regard to mental health and behavioral supports. We've increased that over the last couple of years and we've sort of done that systematically. I think our role in the district is really to build capacity within our general education classrooms and we've been doing that through our paraprofessional model and also through professional development. And so I'll just echo what my colleagues have said earlier, that if that would be the one place we could probably add to, I think people would agree that the mental health and behavioral health of our students is a concern moving forward.
Very good. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Now, before we do our final section for central office services, there's been a request for another break.
Okay, that's fine. All these healthy people.
We'll take, till the top of the hour.
That's right.
Let's take our seats again, please. Okay, central office services and we'll start with the undistributed, Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley. Cost Center 350, which is page three, I'm sorry, page 144. There's a number of, number of items in there because the 350 is kind of, we don't, you really don't know where else to put it, so that's where you put it, the undistributed. So I get the luxury of this cost center. We cover a number of different items. One is student accident health insurance. We were able to get a very good price, so that's a $10,000, $8,000 decrease. We also pay for substitutes for nurses. That comes out of this cost center, which we oversee. Sick incentive annuity matches, those types of items are also in there. Those are essentially pretty much level funded. I probably will get the award for the largest increase in the budget, which is misleading, 267,769. I need to explain that. This past year, if you look down in FY 2017 revised budget, we have 124,942 in contract negotiations contingencies. Essentially what that is, is that our teachers have a chance twice a year to move across lanes. The EAPC teacher's contract has- The EAPC teacher's contract has seven lanes, as opposed to 12 columns, that are awarded on a yearly basis. Lanes are based on attainment of different degree levels and different mid-degree status. The 124,000, that represents the portion of the staff that will go up in salary lane adjustment effective in February. They have until February they get us the paperwork. It actually takes effect in January, which is mid-year. The balance, we actually had 375,000 in there. The balance has already been distributed and placed into other budget items that are related to the individuals. So that's already listed in the salary accounts, the other salary accounts that are assigned to each school. So in other words, if somebody completed a degree and they went up in September, we plug the money into their, those individual accounts to reflect that for the entire year. Other people will go up mid-year, and they'll only get half the year. So that's what that 125 represents. We budgeted for 400,000 for next year. Obviously, it's a little bit misleading, but we can, we will, we will, I shouldn't say misleading, it's misstated, in how this is budgeted in the sense that it looks like for the next year, we will continue with this practice. We'll budget the full amount of our steps, contraria contingency, going forward for the next FY19 budget, so we'll have a better comparison. What's happening is that we are hiring a younger staff, and we are hiring staff that are on the lower, the upper left-hand column of the salary schedule. In other words, bachelor 123, masters 123, bachelors 15, 123, when people retire. And we get a savings in the beginning. However, we have very good professional development programs that we run here, and people take advantage of that. And we want people to be very well motivated and educated, and to advance themselves so they're the most highly qualified teachers that we can have. There is a cost for that, and that cost comes across in those lane adjustments. So that's really where the increase is in this Cost Center. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Any questions on that? Okay. Next is IMS Accountability and Measurement.
Right in your face, huh? Good evening. I'm Karen Backman. I'm the Director of Accountability and Measurement. Cost Center 351, page 75, this is the summary. My office is responsible for managing the student-staff assessment databases across the district, as well as state and federal mandated reporting, and any other data collection, data analysis type needs in our district. Over the course of the last four years, we've been working pretty hard to incorporate as many other software programs that we've had, that we've been using into our student information system, Aspen, to save some money. We've moved our staff attendance software program into Aspen. We've moved our teacher evaluation program into our information management system. We have moved special education database in there as well. So not only does it save us money, but it also creates more consistency and efficiency in collecting and reporting out the data. So it's kind of a win-win. My budget right now shows an overall decrease of $400. Basically, most of my budget is contracted services. Usually, those go up every year, but the large chunk of that is our student information system, Aspen, which is, that contract is based on per pupil costs, and our student population has been decreasing every year. So next year, it will decrease overall as well. Our contract will be based on this year's October 1 numbers, which have decreased from last year by about 100 students. So our bill for Aspen will be less expensive next year. So any other increases in some of our other contracted services will be offset by that savings. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Miestis, Central Administration Services?
Yes, this is Cost Center 355. It's on page 81. This Cost Center identifies expenses to operate a central office and my direct staff. The biggest change you'll notice is a reduction in building and ground services, a $2,700 decrease, and that's based on us changing the model of support at central office for custodial services. So you'll see a 7.46 percent change in that line, and every other adjustment is really relative to contractual allowances for COLAs that are within the staff at central office. So those are the changes that you'll see. It's a 1.38 percent increase from prior year, which is a $23,700, $23,710 increase from the current year. So any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer.
Any questions? Okay. Dr. Campbell, Curriculum and Professional Development?
Thank you. Cost Center 356 can be found on page 162. This is district-wide curriculum and professional development, and this covers literally all curriculum and professional development needs, both contractual and otherwise, for all certificated, uncertificated staff, non-certificated staff, excuse me, a cost statistic. This would include curriculum development improvements that come down from the state so that we can adhere to the new standards, any professional development that we do, whether it's in-services, workshops, conferences, et cetera, supplies and materials related to those professional development needs, and as well as contractual obligations for course reimbursement, which is in the teachers' and administrative contracts in some cases. This is an overall increase of .4 percent in this budget, which reflects $2,138 increase. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on that topic? Okay, then Human Resources, Mrs. Frye?
Yep. Human Resources is Cost Center 357, page 85. And Human Resources, similar to everyone else tonight, is also a level service budget. Human Resources is much more behind the scenes, which is great than I was used to as a building principal, who are right on the front line. And the majority of our smaller items in the budget represent things like job fairs, memberships, mentor-teacher stipends, things of that nature, supplies for mentor trainings, and things of that sort. And our really big items are our agreement with School Spring, which is a fantastic system for, that majority of school districts are using now for applications, and also our legal services. I spend a lot of time with the legal department that we work with. They're fantastic. And next year, we will be beginning the contract negotiation process again, so I wanted to make sure that was adequate, that nature.
Very good. Any questions on Human Resources? Okay. Business Services and Operations, Mr. Costin?
Thank you. Cost Center 358, which is on page 86, Business Services. This Cost Center oversees many of our contracts, which is our utilities, with the exception of electricity, our natural gas, our propane for our school buses. As you know, we have propane school buses, propane for our buildings, all our telephones, gasoline for all our district vehicles, and energy conservation contracts, which we oversee, student transportation, which I'll get to in one second, and our resource officers, which we share with the Plymouth Police Department, and we pay for a portion of those services. Once again, I have the pleasure of having another large increase, but unfortunately, this is 341,800. It is a, reflects the new bus contract. As you know, our bus contract expired after five years, and we, if I can spend just one or two minutes, we struggled with what was our best option here, because we have, one of the issues that we have to deal with in the state of Massachusetts is very limited competition. We worked with a consultant. We were able to attract three potential bidders, and we had two very highly qualified bidders. As a result, we feel we were able to obtain a very competitive price of $409, $409 a day for a bus, brand-new buses. One of the things, I know it sounds like a lot, but actually, that's much lower than some neighboring communities are paying, and we were very, very fortunate to get that. I think that's a testament to the size of Plymouth, the size of the fleet. We have the tenth-largest bus fleet in the state of Massachusetts, and as you know, we have the largest landmass for a town in the state of Massachusetts. We were, we made the decision to go out for new buses. The school committee and the administration has experienced increased breakdowns in the last year. Our buses are almost 10 years old in the current contract, and we felt that it was time to upgrade the buses for the, for safety, for the latest technology, and for reliability. So we will be making a motion, I know I'll be making a motion, a recommendation for the school committee, the next school committee meeting, to award this contract to First Student. And we feel that was, it's a very, very competitive contract. And we also went out for seven years with three one-year renewals. The reason for that is to amortize the vehicles over a longer period of time, as opposed to a five-year contract. So that's something that we felt was also instrumental in getting a good price. I know a $300,000 increase doesn't seem like a good price, but I can tell you, there are some school districts that are realizing a 25 percent increase in school transportation. And ours went from about $378 to $406 a day, which is much, much lower for all new buses. So we're very happy with that. And answer any questions if I can.
In terms of the contract that we have in place, are there any clawbacks in terms of reliability if they don't meet those standards?
Oh, absolutely, there are. The reality, and what will happen is they have a certain amount of time to get a bus there, but really, no time is good when you've got students broke down on Route 3, and you've got the state police coming to help you unload students and load onto another bus. If they don't provide the service that day, if they're not able to meet the fleet that day, there is absolutely, we have, I think it's $200 a day.
Okay, thank you.
But if it breaks down en route, not really.
Very good. Next topic, solar renewable energy.
Finally, I have no increase in this line, in this Cost Center. But I did want to mention one thing, and for the Finance Committee. We are 100 percent solar, as we've said before. The price that's in this Cost Center is, there are no bills to EverSource. We don't pay bills to EverSource. We pay bills to our solar renewable company. So we're covering 100 percent of our bills with solar. In addition, we have a total of six solar fields. One is on the top of North High School. We have four other fields. We share those with the town, and that's what part of this Cost Center oversees, that we essentially are the aggregator for the town of Plymouth. We have two fields that are totally 100 percent town, 1.1 million kilowatt hours and 1.8 million kilowatt hours. In addition, we have a 1585 split with another field, so that's about another million kilowatt hours. So we're working closely with the town. I know when you review their budget, you'll see that there are some solar savings there. They're probably in the range of about 250,000 in savings. And as you know, we're in the range of about 800 to 900,000. So I think this program has really worked well, and we actually enjoy working with the solar companies and working with the town. It's really neat to see. We hope for Sunday days.
Knew you'd get that in there, yeah.
That's for you, Mr. Bagley.
Waiting for it now, yeah. Charter schools are rising tide.
And finally, charter schools. We break out, I get to be the closer. We break, this Cost Center really is just a, separates the buses that we supply to the charter school. We are required, since the charter school is within the town of Plymouth, to provide transportation. We have eight buses that we send to the charter school, and this is the allocation that's based on the new contract rates for the routes that we run up to Rising Tide.
And that brings us to the end of all the presentations. Are there any questions that popped into your head you want to circle back on before we call it a night?
Hi, just a couple of observations. It's my first time sitting here. I was involved in the process on the backend last year. Very impressed with the performances of the educators, and I thought they did a great job in the budget, and I think they, again, did a great job. Just a couple other observations. Heard a lot about deferred maintenance, heard a lot about capital projects not being done, and that's the one side. And I have a child who goes to school. And then when I leave here and I look at the same level funding, which was over 5 percent for most of the folks, and I guess for the budget itself was about 4, then I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to sharpen the pencil, because the town will have increases as well. And last year, the school budget, I believe, is 5, I forgot the exact figure, 5 percent. We know a bunch of that was with the kindergarten students. But there's a lot of folks out in the community that, you know, when you tell them same level funding, 4 to 5 percent, that's a lot more than any increase they received this year. So I just want us to be sensitive to that. And I don't want to speak for the Finance Committee, but most of the folks are the same there this year that were there last year. And I know they were very sensitive about raising some funds to hire additional police officers, and they asked for the school committee, and then Dr. Miestis and his group to possibly come back with some funding. So, and technology was a big one, and I heard 400, 500,000. I would love to hear of a way to come back with $500,000 without adding to the budget, where we could maybe kind of take a big chunk of this technology issue out of the way instead of waiting another three, four, or five years. Sounds like a lot of this technology is already very dated and almost obsolete. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Scott.
Yep, Mr. Merrill?
What's the average pupil cost for the town of Plymouth, or for the town schools?
Gary, can you pull that for me? The last, if I may, sorry, the last number that we have is based on FY15. The reason is when we all submit our end-of-year reports, those are not out yet. The average per pupil expenditure is, I know Dr. Campbell and I looked at this, and we had a chuckle, $14,934.64. The reason being, the state average is $14,935. So we're very close to state average. The only comment I'll make, if you look at the per pupil expenditures, you'll see that we are very high in insurance, retirement programs, and other. That makes up that per pupil expenditure. We're almost 1,000, about $700 higher than the state average. And the reason I make that point is that while that is a, that's a benefit, and the town has to pay that for health insurance, that doesn't go directly into the school budget or to the classrooms for supplies or materials or technology and deferred maintenance. That's one of the only per pupil items that is really a benefit that's counted.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gallo?
I just have a couple of observations myself as well. There was a lot of conversation about grants, and I know that there are a couple specific grants that I heard that, and a couple specific things that people said that they needed. And one was like a camera system, alarm system type thing. And I know that on the town side, the rec department just received an $8,000 or $10,000 grant to put cameras into one of their buildings, the Manamet Youth Center. So although I was going to ask this question at our next meeting, which was a little bit more detailed, do we actually have people that solely write grants?
We do not have a grant writer in the district. I think that task is shared by most people in the room.
I think that task is shared by most people in the room that presented tonight, so it really depends on the opportunity that comes up in the focus area and how it aligns. So I think that responsibility, to date, has really been focused on individuals in the district. So the success that we had is really dependent on people that are driving that. We've all been involved in grant writing in our time, and every opportunity we can, we'll continue to do that. And any opportunity that's available, we will find a way to do it. I think the dilemma that we have is, we don't have anyone that's on the radar out there nationally, just picking away, looking at grants that are just saying, hey, this fits, this one doesn't. I mean, that may be a systemic town-wide opportunity, because I think where we have our educational pieces, I think there may be more municipal things that might help in both avenues.
Well, one of the things that I've researched as well is grant writers, because everybody loves a grant writer.
That's right.
And one of the benefits is, is that grant writers are not compensated unless they bring money in.
Yep.
And a percentage. And I think both school department and townwide is something that we would really seriously need to look into. Because we need to make up some money somewhere. And there are a lot of grants out there. It's just, we don't, nobody knows exactly where they're hidden.
Sure.
That's a follow-up. I think one of the benefits that we've had with some of our partners that we've brought to the table, they've actually paid for grant writers or contract to have a grant writer to write the grant for us. So I think, you know, Beth Israel has done a wonderful job in partnering with us to bring programming to the district. But, you know, I think it's one of those things that we continually look at avenues on how to do that. I think one of the dilemmas that we have in our district is when you look at the multimillion-dollar grants that we would feel attracted to apply for, our free or reduced lunch numbers, which is what drives the application qualification, are not at the level that would qualify us. So that, every time we look at a grant that looks really attractive and we think would be in line with some of the services that we could benefit from or programming, that benchmark isn't there, which really is kind of disheartening in the sense that we know we could, we could do certain things with that, those dollars. One of the things that we have done in years past, and will continue to look at, is partnering with other school districts that do have those qualification numbers, and some grants allow us to do that, to partner with those school districts, and we do a collaborative grant, which allows us to make, that would allow us to get our numbers up to where it could be to qualify. So, you know, to your point, I think it's something that has to be ongoing and cyclical to make it work.
Okay. With that, then, again, I would reiterate that we covered a lot of material in a short span of time. You have, everybody, all the members have, till the 19th is our next meeting, and that's when we'll actually vote on it. The school district, the school committee will vote on the budget. Okay? So if you have any follow-ups, you just work with Dr. Maestas and myself, just make sure I'm CC'd on things, so I can keep track of what areas we need to drill into. I want to try to stay on top of it this year, a little bit better than last year. Last year was a little more, it was a little too loose. So, we should keep it a little more structured this year. Any feedback working through me? And we'll be successful on the 19th. You look like you have something to say, Mr. Helm, you want to? Okay. So, with that, it is 10:25. For those that don't know, at 10:30, we would have to vote, vote an extension, so kudos to everybody for bringing it in on time. Thank you. And at 10:26, we're adjourned.